Can you hear me okay? Okay. All right, um, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Can everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, um, can I get a motion to hear and consider and approve the 2023 officers?
Hi, it's-
A motion from the floor for a nomination of the 2023 officers?
So moved, Sheila Marmian.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, is there a nomination from the floor?
I have a nomination.
Go ahead.
I nominate Lori Charlton to be Chairman, Chairwoman of the Board of Finance.
Is there a second?
I'll second, it's John Matola.
Okay. Um, is there any discussion on this nomination?
Hi.
Or any comment?
Sheila Marmian. I think we've all benefited from Ms. Charlton's leadership over the past year. She's done, in my mind, an excellent job leading us through some thorny uh, budgeting issues. She's ruled with integrity and um, she has incredible financial experience that I think we've all benefited from, not only this board but the town. And I wholeheartedly nominate her to be our chairman during the next term. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the board?
I'd like to make a comment. I wanna echo Ms. Marmian's observations. Uh, the only comment I'd wanna make, and I'll put myself first, saying that uh, it would be my goal in future meetings to continue the emphasis on camaraderie and respect and to perhaps um, be more aware, for lack of a better phrase, of any potential um, misunderstandings during the meetings so that we all maintain a sense of decorum. That's, and Lori does a great job of that, has done a great job of it in difficult meetings, especially recently. So I'd wanna encourage her to continue to emphasize that as we move forward in the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other uh, comments uh, from the board?
It's Jim Walsh. I also think, um, Chairwoman, um, Marmian has done a great job in her first ten- year of her tenure. And I, and I echo the comments by um, Sheila Marmian as well. So I see no reason why she wouldn't continue to do a great job. And I also am just following the history of this board. Having been on a number of years, it's always whoever politically is in charge of the board, that's who has the officer positions. And I think that we should continue that going forward for all the positions. So I'm not gonna say it again for everybody, but that's the way I think it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Is there any additional comments from the board? Seeing none. Well, I can uh, speak to um, leading a, a board and I know that it's not always difficult, uh, not always easy, uh, to uh, to rein people in and make sure that people are, are um, productive and, and focused on the agenda items. And um, obviously that's always a challenge or can be a challenge. Uh, I have enjoyed working with uh, Chairwoman uh, Charlton as, since she's been Chairwoman, and I look forward to continuing that work. Well, if there's no other nominations from the floor, we do have a nomination and a second. And if there's no further comments from the board, can I ask for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And looks like that's unanimous. Congratulations, Mrs. Charlton. And uh, good luck to, to you and the board.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Kupchak. Appreciate it and look forward to working with you um, in this upcoming year.
And thank you. And I apologize that I have to pop off because I do have another uh, virtual meeting. Hopefully I'll get on that one easier.
All right, thank you again.
All right, have a good night. Take care now.
Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you, and thank you to all my colleagues. I'll, I'll say a few words um, uh, in a bit, but I, I wanna continue with our nominations and, and I'll take the opportunity to nominate John Matola as our Vice Chairman. Is there a second? Okay, second from Mr. DeWitt. Comments from board members? Uh, Mr. Curly?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I've, I've had the pleasure of knowing John for, I thought about it, over fifteen years, John. And I've known him uh, to be one of the most level-headed individuals uh, that I know. And I think that is um, a value to this board. You've got experience that is broad, um, and you've done an excellent job over the last year. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, um, and I think you do a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Any other comments? Ms. Marmian?
I just wanna say that it's been such a pleasure to serve with John, both on the RTM and on this board. And he brings historical uh, experience and uh, perspective that is so welcome. He's level-headed, even-handed, and um, I truly respect his perspective. So I wholeheartedly uh, support this nomination.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else?
Oh, well, speaking for the minority, John, John, John's a great guy. I mean, uh, there's no one better, um, other than you, Ms. Charlton. But uh, uh, but I've become friends with John over the years. And John's a very reasonable, level-headed, and, and, and he's become a friend, and I'm happy about that. Even though we're on opposite sides of the aisle, we both agree, and sometimes we strongly disagree. But we are, always stay friends. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanna say um, how much I've enjoyed working with Mr. Matola, how deeply I respect him. I could not think of a better partner as uh, Vice Chair over this past year, especially being new in this role. I think Ms. Marmian and Mr. Curly both said the word "level-headed", which is exactly how I would describe John. Uh, level-headed, um, apolitical, um, and, and just very reasonable. And uh, you know, even keeled. And I think his experience also as a municipal attorney has been invaluable to this board and to all of us. So I am uh, uh, really happy that he's, that he's willing to do this again. So if there are no other comments, we can move to a vote. All in favor of John Matola as our Vice Chair?
Aye.
You can vote for yourself, John. All right. It is unanimous. All right, and we'll move on to Secretary. Nominations for Secretary. Mr. Matola.
It's a pleasure for me to nominate Sheila Marmian to be our Secretary. Sheila, you are a dedicated public servant, served this town well over a number of years. I think you've done a great job as our Secretary, and uh, I look forward to working with you again uh, over the next year. So I nominate Sheila Marmian.
All right, seconds, Mr. Stark. All right. Uh, any other comments? Mr. DeWitt?
Um, it's uh, it's, Ms. Marmian and I have served together for a long time and on a couple of especially onerous committees. And uh, I've always appreciated her dedication and her commitment and her time to the, to the town of Fairfield. So I think it's uh, deserved that she's our Secretary for another year.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Other comments, nominations? All right, if not, we can move to a vote. All in favor of Ms. Sheila Marmian as Secretary?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. It is unanimous. So um, so first, let me just say thank you again to, to my colleagues for your support. It is, it is truly an honor, and you have my commitment to do the best job I can in leading the board fairly and inclusively. I wanna thank each of you for your commitment to the community, to the taxpayers, um, and for the experiences and different viewpoints you've each brought to the table. Those different viewpoints have led to some intense debates and disagreements uh, along the way this past year, and I think that's natural in a group of nine people. And I think a, a healthy level of tension is, is also valuable. And I hope that we continue to challenge each other and the administration respectfully and constructively, uh, not only as we vet the individual issues that come before us, but as we evaluate and work to improve the processes uh, that we use to do so. That's what good governance demands, and uh, that's the oversight duty that's been entrusted to us by the voters. So we've lived through plenty of challenges as a board this past year, and I don't think that'll diminish. Budget season is gonna be on us before we know it. Capital spending decisions will continue to be a particular challenge. We've got, as we all know, aging infrastructure in this town that requires attention, town and school buildings that need critical maintenance and health and safety upgrades, and a long list of desired amenities that need to be prioritized. And uh, as we all know, these decisions become more complex in a time where the town continues to grapple with inflation and uh, continued supply chain challenges and economic uncertainty. Uh, but we'll get there, we always do. Uh, striking a balance between service and cost to taxpayers is, is fundamentally a balancing act. And I think this board has always been a crucial part of getting that balance right. And I know it's a responsibility each of you take seriously. My friend, Mr. DeWitt, likes to joke that um, no one from the public writes letters or shows up at public budget hearings imploring us to please fund our long-term liabilities. Or wears a T-shirt that says "Fund OPEB". But as we uh, work to meet our current challenges, all of those types of uh, unsexy issues, whether it's fully funding our pension and OPEB liabilities, our fund balance, our long-term capital planning, uh, bonding, debt service policies, all the issues that impact the long-term health and financial stability of our community and our AAA credit rating will always remain a focus of this board. And that's a legacy that we've been entrusted to maintain. So again, I wanna thank each of you for everything you do, um, for the honor of being your Chair. It's, it's really wonderful to be back around this table again after two years of looking at each other through screens. And uh, I look forward to working with you all again this year um, and with the administration and the other elected bodies. Any, uh, any comments before we move on to the regular agenda? Okay, so for members of the public who've dialed in or joined us on the WebEx, you are muted, will not be heard by board members. Typically, we welcome live public comment during meetings when there are voting items on the agenda. This evening, we have one voting item, which is Item 7. Uh, so for anyone joining the meeting remotely who wishes to comment on that agenda item, please indicate so in the chat box, um, at any time before the items, before the item is heard. Uh, you'll be recognized to speak at the appropriate time, and we ask that you provide your name and address for the record and limit your statement to two minutes. As always, members of the public are encouraged to send their comments and questions in writing to the board at bof@fairfieldct.org. You are correct. Agenda Item 5 is a voting schedule, but we will not take um, public comment on that item. All right, thank you for that. Mr. DeWitt? All right, so tonight, um, our organizational meeting for the benefit of the public, aside from electing officers, we also vote on our meeting schedule for the year, discuss committees. We have two items on our agenda tonight that were postponed from the quarterly meeting. Uh, one is to review the status of investments in the town's pension and OPEB plans. And the other is to uh, review the status of approved capital projects. And we have uh, the voting item related to the WPCA project. So with that, we will um, we can move on to Item 4, which is to hear, consider, and approve members of the BOF subcommittees, Audit, Budget, Fund Balance, and Debt Policy Committee, Purchasing Policy, Senior and Disabled Tax Relief Committee. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Ms. Marmian. Historically, the way this has been handled is that you all have reached out with your preferences on committee assignments. And if it's okay with everyone, we can do the same this year. Um, I will say, I think I told everyone last time, we did have three individuals step up for the Senior and Disabled Tax Relief Committee, and that's Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Marmian, um, and Mr. Curly. Uh, but other than that, um, please just get back to me via email if you can, uh, within the next week or so, and let me know your committee preferences in order. And hopefully everyone will serve on a committee this year. Uh, we definitely have a lot of things in front of us, and it would be appreciated if we could all uh, get involved. All right. Any comments? If not, we'll move on to Item 5, which is to hear, consider, and approve the 2023 schedule. All right, a motion to hear this item? Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. DeWitt. The draft schedule is included in the backup, in the posted backup on Page 1. Uh, any comments from the board on this schedule? Ms. Marmian?
Thank you very much. I just wanna go to the um, the meeting scheduled for the budget. And perhaps through you, Madam Chairman, to Mr. DeWitt, talk about, we have five scheduled budget sessions. Do these sessions take into um, consideration the conversation we had in terms of how to organize the sessions that we had, I don't know, approximately a month ago? Or can you explain to us if anything's changed in terms of the number of sessions or the organization of the sessions?
Do you wanna say it? So I, I can just uh-
Since I didn't see this till tonight, yes, I think you probably-
Let, let me just start out. So the, the number of sessions that's scheduled is consistent with prior years, except we did not put on here the snow makeup day that we've always had in the past. Um, we haven't used that recently, and you know, obviously if there's snow, we can meet remotely. Um, the idea last year was to keep it on there in case we needed another meeting. But we've got, uh, you know, the same number of meetings scheduled this year as we did last year. There's a separate meeting scheduled for follow-up questions, that's March 27th. So I hope that's adequate. And I, you know, I, I think that Mr. Schmidt, um, and Mr. Manieri have committed to work with us to try to make our meetings efficient. And uh, I don't see any reason why this shouldn't be, you know, an adequate number of meetings this year. I think we have uh, we're, we're going to meet with the administration again, and, and we'll put before the board a proposed schedule of what will be included in each budget meeting. Um, Mr. DeWitt, you wanna talk more about that?
Yeah, I um, I consolidated the meeting minutes from their meet, well, our Budget Committee meeting, basically, um, and delivered them to the, to the Madam Chair. And um, yeah, I'm, I'm confident that there's some, there's some room in here to maybe lose a meeting or two. I think for this year, and, and just going on record, I'd like to be in the Budget Committee one more year to see this kinda through. And then we can, we can, maybe that'll be a nice handoff for, for, for the next uh, person to take over. But I'm, I'm confident that we can fit within the five with the follow-up day and um, hopefully even take a couple of days out of there. Or at least keep our meetings shorter. Maybe that's a better goal than reducing the-
And is the timing changed as well? It's starting at seven now versus, was it 7:30 in the past?
Yeah, we've, it, it's very time to time. I, I mean, I, I, I do, I do see it's seven o'clock-
Seven was a suggestion from the board.
Yeah. We've done seven before. I think it's, I think that's a, as long as everyone's comfortable in being able to make the seven o'clock, I think it's, you know, I think it's a better way to go forward.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Ms. Leclerc?
7:30 would clearly be better for me.
Okay, um, you know, I'm open to, if 7:30 works better for everyone, then, then that's fine with me. I think, I, I think this was the suggestion I thought I heard from the last meeting, but if that doesn't work for everyone, we can certainly revert to 7:30. Mr. Walsh?
I thought I had heard at our um, Budget Discussion Meeting that Mr. DeWitt led, that there seemed to be more of a consensus to go to an extra meeting because people were, some people here were complaining that they don't work as well at night. So I was expecting to actually see an extra meeting on here, which I don't see. So I would propose that we add another night. And if we don't, that's fine with me because I'm a night person. So I'll, I, you know, my litigation firm used to know I was in charge at night. They would, they would let me run the team at night. But I will tell you, I am not gonna be limited on what I ask. There is no limitation allowed. And I'm kind of getting, I, I've never agreed with the five before your term, Lori. Um, I, I never agreed with it. We'd had seven meetings sometimes. It ran smoother. We moved it to five, and it's always been a problem. And members have always complained, especially members who don't work as well at night. But when you consolidate the meetings and you put fifteen, seventeen departments on in a given evening sometimes, I mean, it's just, I'm not gonna half-ass it. I'm just not. I'm gonna ask as many questions as I wanna ask, and I'm not gonna be limited by time. I'm fine with the five. If you guys wanna keep it there, that's fine. But I really don't wanna hear anymore, because we hear it every year, of the whining of people complaining that the meetings go too long. It's just not fair to the taxpayer. We're all here, and we all got elected for our various reasons, and the taxpayers have put us up there. And I'm gonna ask as many questions as I think I need to ask. Not concerned that, oh, it's getting close to 11 o'clock. So it's fine if you wanna go to five. I think the better course is to go to six. And I think it's a compromise on it, but that's where I am. So I'll make a motion to add one given evening at the chairs, i- if that's where people wanna go, for the Chair to decide where um, she would like to have that evening. I'm, I'm less concerned about where the evening is versus wanting another night.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Comments from board members? Ms. Marmian?
So we had a great discussion about the budget uh, um, hearings and the way to kind of um, facilitate good discussion by asking our questions ahead of time and potentially uh, you know, limiting the number of nonprofits, et cetera. There was a lot of discussion. So I'm just wondering, uh, and perhaps Mr. Whit, DeWitt, not to put you on the spot, but was that kind of all taken into consideration when we looked at the five nights? Or is this ki- still evolving? Just to understand where we are, maybe Madam Chairwoman Charlton can give us perspective.
Yeah, go ahead. I, I do just wanna point out it's six nights. So we have five, and then we have the night devoted to makeup. So it is, it is actually six evenings, um, which is the same as last year. But go ahead, Mr. DeWitt.
So just to be clear, I was not consulted on the schedule for this year. Uh, so this is the first time I'm looking at it, and there's, and there's five meetings. I, I don't disagree with anything Mr. Walsh is saying. I, I also do not like to hear, oh, it's 11 o'clock, it's gonna, you know, there, we, we stay as late as we stay, you know? In looking at the budget process, I think the best way to minimize the length of meetings is to ha, is to see less departments, right? And, but, but I think we have to have a, a robust process that says, I'm not gonna see this department because their increase is zero. Or, or, you know, we don't need to see not-for-profits, whatever that is. In coordination also with the fact that we need to implement a year-long um, rotation of these same departments, when we wanna talk about, you know, when Mark Barnhart comes here, if we say, hey, Mark, your, your increase is .1%, don't need to see it budget, but I wanna see in July because I want you, I wanna talk about what's going on with economic development. So we, we, we really do need to roll this in. And, and again, I haven't had comment into this. Uh, I, I'll support Mr. Walsh's motion. Uh, it, it appears as if there's some time between the first and second meeting, the 8th and the 14th, so there's maybe some wiggle room in there. And then I think if, if in January, when, when we were talking before the meeting, we could maybe get together with the recommendations I had. If, if it looks like we're at four meetings, well, then we'll cancel two meetings.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. And I, and I can add some insight to what went into this, but Mr. Curly?
Yep, I um, uh, just wanna kinda follow the thought, thought process through. So we have the five blocks of meetings that are scheduled for seven. We do have the follow-up if needed, that's the six that you were talking about. I definitely like the idea of starting earlier. However, I think it's more important to make sure that all of our members are available. So I would support moving these meetings back to 7:30. However, if we uh, an hour, two hours, we'll, we'll lose three hours of meeting time if we just move these uh, to, from 7:00 to 7:30 and not add a meeting. So I think if, I think both of those things are related now, right? So if we're gonna move the meetings back to 7:30 to be more inclusive, then we also have to realize that we're losing three hours of meeting time over, over the course. So it kinda lends itself to add that extra night. And maybe March 9th is that, that date, and just kick it off on the 8th and 9th, uh, 14th, 15th, 22nd, 23rd, that's the uh, back-to-back night rhythm, so.
Uh, Mr. Tosani?
I just wanna say, I wanted to make a motion to amend uh, Mr. Walsh's initial motion to move the meeting time to 7:30, I agree with Mr. Curly, and add the additional night that was Mr. Walsh's initial motion. So I'll make that amendment.
Okay. All right, um, other comments on this? Okay, I just, um, just to give some perspective, uh, you know, again, this is the, this is the same number of meetings as, as we've had in the past. And I um, I just wanna add some thoughts to what Mr. DeWitt said. We, we did speak a lot about how to make our budget meetings more effective. I don't think efficiency is the only uh, goal here. I think it's to be more effective. And uh, we've, we've had some discussions with Mr. Schmidt about it, and we've had some discussions among ourselves, and there were a lot of ideas on the table. And I think one of the most important things that we can do, and that the administration agreed to work with us on, is that we get better information. We spend an, you know, as it is now, we don't get backup materials generally for the budget. We get the budget book. We get a book that just has a bunch of numbers in it. It doesn't have a lot of useful insight in terms of the budget drivers and what's happened. It doesn't, uh, you know, preempt any of the questions that come up every single year on, you know, the obvious changes. Um, and so, you know, my feeling was that we had so many good suggestions on that budget process that provided opportunities to make our meetings more effective and more efficient that I thought that would address the problem that, or, or the complaint that meetings go too late. You know, it's, in my mind, it's got to. So I just, I kinda looked at it um, and I thought that keeping the same number of meetings, but making those improvements was, was really the, the thought process behind this draft. I think if we were gonna do nothing to try to address the issues we all talked about, adding a meeting might be um, you know, might be the answer. But that's where this, this is coming from. So I, I do think that uh, if seven o'clock doesn't work for everybody, then we should move to 7:30. You know, I, I'm kinda with Mr. Walsh, like, going late doesn't necessarily bother me, but I think a lot of people, you know, feel like they're less productive. And when it gets, you know, gets to be midnight, and for the department heads, it's also not great when people are sitting around waiting for their turn. So I, you know, I do, I did take all that feedback. I do think that we can fix that problem without adding another meeting. So that was my, that was the thought process here in presenting the schedule um, with the same number of meetings as last year. But um, given that, I'll, you know, if there's any other comments, we can, you know, we can decide what we wanna do and take a vote on that. Mr. DeWitt?
Yeah, just one last comment. So um, this budget, just, this budget we're looking at basically says six nights or seven nights, whatever the number is. The, the real, no kidding, budget schedule that says, please comes on this night, is something the Budget Committee draws up, right? So I think adding another night gives us a little more flexibility. And maybe, and, and I fully expect to not need six nights. And, and I, I, I truly do think that we can, you know, make that um, Budget Committee, you know, adjusted budget, uh, adjusted schedule, excuse me, with six nights or five nights, whatever we think it is. And again, if we don't need the time, cancel the meeting. So I don't think there's any harm in adding the, the sixth meeting, to be perfectly honest with you. And if it's six- And if it's six meetings that end at ten, maybe that's better than five meetings that end at one. So again, I'll, I'll support adding the meeting and, and support the move to seven thirty.
Okay. So maybe the way we can do it then, if we want to, and, and for the record, I, I prefer not to do this, but if, it seems like the board is, is willing to add the extra meeting. So maybe what I'll suggest is that in past years, we've, we've had that snow day meeting that got canceled and it was, you know, we didn't use it, but it was there so that it avoided the need to call a special meeting. So, you know, we can add on, we don't have to call it snow day, but that extra meeting. I'm just gonna pull up the calendar here so that we can decide on this now.
March ninth, really?
Yeah, I think, Mr. DeWitt, I would, I, I think if we're gonna, I was, I was more inclined to do it toward the end of the process if we needed it, but, you know.
There's a lot of time in between the first and second.
Yeah, there's a week.
And then they kind of, kind of bunch up, so.
Well, okay, then if we put the ninth on today, I think that, you know, we'll designate which one, the Budget Committee will work on designating which one of these days is the makeup day.
Yeah.
And then we'll go from there. Okay.
Sure, sure.
All right. So Mr. Walsh, do you want to, I don't know if you want to amend that motion to just add the date of the ninth?
So, so, so I will amend my motion that, but it'll stay the same. We are going to be adding a day and it will be on March ninth. And we are also going to amend the time start. I'm gonna amend my motion to amend the time start to be seven thirty.
I'll second.
Okay. If no other comments, take this to a vote. All in favor? Okay. Aye? All right. It is unanimous. All right. Thank you.
I would say, though, I fully support seeing how it works this year and seeing whether some of the changes that we have, like where we don't ask the first select woman questions, we just let her make her presentation. Hopefully, that's gonna be part of this. That we don't ask Mr. Barnhart questions, we're gonna have a presentation where we can ask him questions on a given evening, things, the things we talked about, that your committee will take that into account and see how it works. And maybe we can change it next year after we have another review.
Yeah, and I, and I think when that budget schedule comes together, we'll, we'll put it before the board. Because as I went back and looked at the budget, and we'll move on from this topic, but there were a significant number of departments that collectively were less than 1% of the budget dollars, that had flat budgets and that they're coming before us. And so those are the types of things that I think, you know, we can address. And again, also, I think one of the biggest benefits is going to be working with the administration and seeing if we can get better backup information before us so that we're not, you know, spending an hour with the library, an hour with the senior center, et cetera. We can, you know, have better information that enables us to get through those presentations quicker. All right. Again, thank you, everybody. So we will move on to, sorry, Mr. Crowley?
Yeah, I know that, that part of the discussion was focused on the, the budget section of the calendar. But I, but I did have one other suggestion that I wanted to make. I recognize that we have a capital plan workshop meeting scheduled for January 31st. And I know historically that capital plan workshop had been scheduled and held in September each year. And I know there have been some discussions amongst the board members here at various meetings along the way that we're kind of flying blind with some of these capital projects. And, and I'm not suggesting that the administration should change the process, but I do think that we can get information regarding the capital plan at different points in time. And what I'd like to suggest is, in addition, not in, in place of, but in addition to the January 31st capital plan workshop, to reinstate a capital plan workshop meeting in September. And my suggestion is to make a motion to add September 26th, which is a Tuesday, the last Tuesday in September, for a semi-annual capital plan workshop.
Great. Mr. DeWitt, seconds. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of that motion? Nope. If you have comments, go ahead. But, all right, all in favor?
So we're trying to get the capital planning meeting back to September.
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, our committee, the workshop, has been making progress. It's taken a long time. But I, I think, I think it could work to get it back to September by the time we're done with this. We're trying to like heck to get everything done and a five-year plan done by the end of January. We're gonna see how that goes. So, but I think once we get past this, hopefully, I think the goal should be to get it done in September, back on track. So, okay.
Agreed. All right. Any other comments before we vote on this amendment? All right. All in favor of adding a capital planning workshop on September 26th? Aye? All right. It is unanimous. Any other comments on the budget schedule? I mean, I'm sorry, on the overall schedule, not the budget schedule. Mr. DeWitt?
Just one overall comment, and I mentioned this before the meeting. But having any of our meetings in Independence Hall with nine members is really not good. I don't think it's good for us. I don't think it's good for the people watching the meeting. I don't think it's constructive. So any effort that can drag us back into this room or something larger than the first floor of Independence Hall, I would be in favor of, of that. Just as a generic comment.
Yeah, thank you. And we're working on that. So when the schedule was put together, this room is taken on all of these nights. My understanding is that there are various Board of Education and RTM meetings already scheduled. So Ms. Carpenter is gonna work on that for us and figure out whether those are meetings that are board meetings or just other internal meetings or committee meetings. And so the goal, I agree with you, would be to, for us to meet in this room, particularly during the budget season when we may have members of the public here. So there are, there are. I guess, I guess this room started getting booked up in September unbeknownst to me. So that's where we are. All right. Any other comments on the schedule? All right. So then let's put this to a vote. All in favor of approving the 2023 schedule as amended? Please say aye. All right. It is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right. So we are gonna move on to item six, to review the current status of the town's pension and OPEB funds. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. Matola, seconded by Ms. LeClaire. All right. So the materials for this item begin on page two of the Posted Backup Online. Typically, the Chair of our Pension Board, Carolyn Tribuco, would be here to walk us through this item, but she wasn't available this evening. Her colleague on the Pension Board, Mr. Collimore, graciously agreed to step in for her. Welcome. Thank you for being here. And we'll turn it over to you. You have to hold it when you speak.
For the entire time that I'm speaking?
Yes.
This is great technology. Okay. All right. Carolyn described, Chair Tribuco described the approach and I'm gonna follow it as best I understood it. So starting, I think everybody has the backup document, starting with slide eight and, slides eight and nine. The market value of the town pension is about $390 million. The performance is a negative, as of the end of nine thirty, the third quarter, was a negative 5%, less bad than the benchmark marginally. The allocation was, as you can see, about 50% in equities, US equities being about 30%, non-US or international equities being about 20%, and then diversified among asset classes after that. The OPEB portfolio starts on slide 13. My finger's getting sore. The valuation as of the end of the third quarter is six, about $65 million. Performance was slightly worse, ever so slightly worse than the, the benchmark. The allocation, as you can see, was a bit heavier, heavier in equities, about 67%, about two-thirds, and about 21% in fixed income. Next, going to slide four. Sorry for the choppiness of this, but this is, the Vanguard approach is slightly different than what I understand Carolyn's has been. This is all about the, the market environment. So as I think everybody would know, just from even reading the front page of the Wall Street Journal, the markets remained very, very volatile. Inflation has become a steady problem. Ukraine obviously is keeping President Biden's hands full. And I'll lead with a comment of Jay Powell of the Fed, that he, the Fed, whatever, will do whatever it takes to reduce inflation, which is kind of a threat that he's gonna be championing the increasing interest, increasing interest rates over time. Mortgage rates, as you've seen, top 7% in, in September. And the pound actually almost reached parity with the US dollar. That's how things are even worse across the pond. On slide five, we have an interesting slide. This year has been one of the most volatile measured here by Vanguard, which goes using FactSet data going back 34 years. You'll see that the combination of 1% days positive or negative has been as near the top among years measured in this 34-year period. So the volatility has been very high even to this point. Again, it's a combination of, of good and bad 1% plus days. Slide six. We've seen a, an unfortunate correlation of fixed income and equity returns. You'll see the long-term treasuries, which normally you'd hope to see weighing against troubles in equities, well, they're, they're down too. So as of nine thirty, things were pretty poor the year to date, but the, actually, since then, things have picked up fortunately. Now switching to JREB business, in July, we looked at the discount rate and on the recommendation of Milliman, we stayed at 6.9%. And we've since increased, since the date of this report, we've increased the target private equity portion of the portfolio from 5% to 10%. We're also switching, actually Jared would have a more detail on this, to Wilmington Trust from what was Peoples now is M&amp;T Peoples. And I'll just leave, finish with an opportunity for questions, but also a forecast. Again, apologize for the choppiness on page 18. Vanguard thinks there is a 65% probability of recession in 2023. So that's a bit sobering. So I'll stop there and take any questions. And I hope we don't stay until midnight.
Not tonight.
Pretty ominous sounding.
We'll wait, we'll wait for March before we start doing that. Thank you very much, Mr. Collimore. Questions from the board? Come on, we can't be that easy on them. All right. Mr. Testane?
How are you, Tom? Just curious, on the recession piece, how did it come up with 65%? There's been like alternating views, depending on what you read, that the US is in a current recession right now. So why is it 65? Why wouldn't it be higher than that if many economists agree we're already in a recession? Because it's only, from what I've read, it's only gonna get worse than the projected 65%.
Negative quarters, two consecutive quarters of loss of GDP. Negative GDP, right. I'm not sure why we would not qualify for that right now, but actually, if you look at the, the Vanguard scenario for 2022, on the same slide, there's a 25% chance of a US recession. So I'm wondering if there's, I think there's actually the University of Michigan that does a shadow-fed calculation that may be different from the rule of thumb that you just mentioned that, of course, you know, we're all familiar with. So it may be the University of Michigan Purchasing Managers Index that has a somewhat more convoluted definition. I, I don't know, to be clear.
And just real quick, you mentioned the Treasury earlier. Any projections, does Vanguard have a projection of what the interest rate would be to? Because I've heard various numbers from what Jerome Paul is, in terms of great hike.
We've talked, I, I read in the paper, another 50 basis points is imminent apparently, and that's why the S&amp;P was in turmoil today, actually the last two days. Yeah. So I, I, I think, my impression is the Fed will remain hawkish for the time being, for what it's worth.
Thank you, Mr. Testane. Mr. Stark?
Hi, Tom. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you. We both got a lot of.
I tried to say hello, but.
Yeah, sorry. We were on the board of the Stanford CFA Society together a long time ago when we were both less gray. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I actually just wanted to point this out to everybody because it's really interesting and it shows you the kind of market we're in. Slide four, if you look at the return on US treasuries, it's kind of, kind of incredible on, on, on US long bonds. For example, a Treasury due in 2051 traded at par this time a year ago and now trades it in 69 cents on the dollar. That's what happens in, you know, in a, in a, in an environment where the yield curve is moving the way it is. That's why you can lose a lot of money on various, otherwise very safe investments. This isn't held to maturity necessarily either, is it? This is an actively traded portfolio?
It's, it's a Vanguard fund, however the manager handles it. I, I think it's a low trading philosophy, but I can't speak to what actually happens.
You said, Mr. Stark? Okay, thank you. Other questions from the board? Mr. Walsh?
What do you think, what was the biggest surprise you found in, in what happened in this quarter? Or, or your group is disgust?
Well, those are, I guess, two different questions. I, I was ready to answer the first question, and I'm actually comfortable answering the first question. The second question, there's so many opinions on the board that may or may not be shared that I really couldn't speak to them. But I'll speak to my opinion. It's, I'm, I've been a pessimist for years and years as the S&amp;P goes up and up. And so finally, I'm right. I'm balanced, I'm wrong, but finally, I'm right. I, I just looked at the, you know, the ridic, my, my son has a mortgage on a house at 2% flat that he got about a year ago. And I, I remember, I remember my wife and I had our first mortgage here in Fairfield at 13%. And I'm thinking, how can anybody lend money for 30 years to a no-good kid like my son for 2%? And he's, he's a good kid. But it's just remark, it was remarkable. And I remember thinking, this is like a, this is a weird world. And then, of course, you know, we went to hell in a handbasket. But again, I've been a bear on other things and been incredibly wrong over the years. But this one, I kind of felt in my bones. It just didn't, didn't feel real.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other questions? Ms. LeClaire?
So you mentioned that the board changed, sorry, I have to keep holding it, that you increased the amount you're gonna put into private equity. Is that because the holdings we actually had increased over the 5%? Or is that just dependent on the market right now?
There, there are two related phenomena there. One is that I don't have the, I could flip through it, I don't, I won't take your time. But the, the investments have done well. But the other is that we've increased our target to 10% from three, from 5% just as where we're going over time for diversification and, and long-term appreciation.
Because in, in my view, that's an element of risk, the private equity, and that's where in, in the past, like, we've had, like, if something goes wrong, that's a good chance it's in the private equity field. So, but that's where you think the most growth is, is that?
Well, to be, to be clear, it's at 10%, not 50%. And it's a diversifier as it's been presented to us by the investment manager, and I, I tend to believe it. It's not without risk, as you say, but you're not gonna make money if you don't put money at risk. I mean, we could put everything in, you know, T-bills and, and we wouldn't, we, you all would be voting for massive contributions to the pension plan, which I don't think. don't think you or the taxpayers would want. So that's the other side of it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Leclerc. Um, just a follow-up question on that. So the, the change in the private equity allocation is in the pension fund. And is that correct? And right now we don't have, uh, any private equity investments in the OPEB trust?
I would have to leaf through pages. I, I believe, I know it's in the pension plan. I'm not sure about OPEB.
Okay. Yeah, I just, maybe just something to. Uh, yes, meaning?
Uh, there, the investments are in both. Uh, so the, um, private equity is in both the OPEB and pension.
Okay, maybe I was looking at the wrong thing here. I was looking at.
Actually, if you look at slide 13, we're currently at 0.2%, so we are in private equity.
We're in private equity, but the policy is, is zero. So maybe, I don't know what that is, but I, I guess.
Actually, if I could interrupt, the policy will be after this report, 10%.
So 10% in both, in both the pension and OPEB. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, other questions from the board? Mr. Walsh?
Just another private equity question. So, and I think Mr. Buca was explaining this a little bit the last time she was before. So is one of the reasons you're going there just the economy that we're in and where we are, that the private equity funds are having an inability right now to generate the most return?
I don't think it's a timing issue, Jim. I, I think it's a perspective that over time, uh, buyout funds, and most of these investments are buyout funds, um, tend to be high-returning approaches. So there, these are a mix of small and large, uh, US, Canadian, and French and Swedish, I think that's the order, um, buyout funds and the, the tracker, and they're diversified across managers and they tend to offer high returns over time. These folks have good histories either with the current firms or with, uh, past firms. So it's a diversifier. Um, I don't think it's, I didn't vote yes as a timings issue. Perhaps other people did. I saw it as a, a sensible, small fraction of the portfolio.
Okay. It just seemed to be the returns in the private equity area wasn't there when, when all the other funds were making so much money. It, it was not really a, seemed, seemed to be a sexy area to go into because they, you, the other funds were just generating high returns as it was. And to me, it didn't seem as though the private equity area was the place to be. Now that it's gone the other way, it seems to be there are companies who can take advantage of that now and find better returns as opposed to just investing in the entire S&amp;P or, you know, things like that.
Yeah, there, I wouldn't, I don't believe anybody thinks private equity is divorced from the public markets. There's obviously a, a valuation overlap between the two, but there, I think there is some diversification. You have some entrepreneurial managerial skill you're adding to the mix that you wouldn't get in the public markets. So I, I think it's a sensible, small fraction of the portfolio. And I think most people on the board, I, I would guess, share that view.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Other comments, questions? Mr. Stark?
I, I would just make, um, some observations and if you disagree or agree, feel free to comment. Um, cause I, we, in my fund, we own private and public positions. And the problem with the private positions is that you don't know how to mark them, um, in line with how the public market equivalent is moving. Um, so for example, we own SkyWest Airlines, which trades publicly, and Republic Airways, which is a private stock. And there's no trading in Republic stock. So we have to sort of guess at how to value it. We're very disciplined about that. Not all private equity funds are. And what happens in an environment like this, or what can happen is the private equity world is slower to mark down their investments in tandem with whatever public comparables there are. Uh, and so they'll outperform, at least in this early phase of, of a downturn. The other factor at play is that when you subscribe to a private equity fund, usually you are required to put in subsequent capital calls. So your amount invested goes up over time. And I believe that is true of our private equity investments here. So what we'll see is, um, private equity as a percent of overall allocation go up considerably over the next year or so. Um, and I think we live with it. Um, I, and first of all, I would have to recuse myself. I'm totally banned from having anything to do with asset allocation, but that would just be my observation.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Other comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Colmore, for being here. Um, we appreciate it. And, uh, maybe we'll see you again one of these days.
Thank you for the questions. I was afraid there'd be none, and you guys have really outdone yourselves, so.
All right. Thank you again. Okay, we're gonna move on to item seven, to hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Board of Selectmen to appropriate $1,750,000 from the WPCA fund balance to finance the repair of the primary digester. Uh, this item requires RTM approval. It was, I understand, approved by the Board of Selectmen last night. All right. So I have to, should I be craning my neck around or should I just be looking at you, Bill, and let, who's, who's gonna kick us off on this item? All right, Mr. D'Vanzo, thank you.
Let me start with just a little background.
Can you just, uh, please say your name for the record? Thank you.
Joe D'Vanzo, 1446 Jennings Road, Vice Chair, WPCA Commission. Uh, let me just start with a brief background. Uh, last April, we had a pressure buildup in our primary digester, which caused the 45-ton lid, no new news, to, uh, uh, damage the bolts that were holding it in place. What we did was, uh, we went out to bid to, uh, both clean and repair the digester. We opened that bid. It was about $2.7 million. Uh, it was deemed too much. So we backed off and we went out for a bid to simply clean the digester. Uh, that bid came in and, uh, that cleaning was just completed as of November 23rd. The final bill for that was 531,000. What was approved was 630,000. We had some contingency in there. Uh, the bid that we had rejected for both the cleaning and the repair was $2.7 million. The problem with that was they couldn't get in and see what the damage was inside until we cleaned it. So now it's cleaned out. It was cleaned out as of November 23rd. Uh, what we are coming to, uh, the boards with is a request for 1.75 million dollars to repair the digester. That repair will require four different pieces. Uh, the liner will need to be removed, uh, as far as the repair goes. Also, uh, some piping got damaged that will need to be repaired internally. We're, uh, want to put some new pressure valves and gauges up on top. And finally, the 45-ton lid needs to be lifted, uh, and the 10 bolts of the 12 that were holding it in place need to be, uh, put back into shape. We're doing this a little differently, the process, because we wanna get this thing done. I, I think everybody might understand that the neighbors are complaining. There, there is a significant smell in the area. And, uh, what we're doing is we've asked, before we went out to bid, to get a final bid, a solid bid, we're coming to the commissions and we're asking for our, uh, our motion was up to 1.75 million. At Board of Selectmen, it was approved for 1.75 million. Uh, my own opinion is that will cover it. We won't be back. That will be more than covering what we need for the repairs, these four repairs. So that's the brief background. We're here tonight. Uh, we've got a, if it gets approved tonight, we have a special meeting of the, uh, RTM next Tuesday? Next Monday or Tuesday? Next Monday. And, uh, we will be going to them with, with whatever we have. And the point being, we will pick up one month if we do it through this process, rather than waiting for the bids, which will, we're asking to be opened on December 15th. We will have a better number, but it will slow us down about three or four weeks. So that, that's where we are right now. Uh, we have, and I think I mentioned it the last time, uh, at the Board of Selectmen, we do have an insurance, we had an insurance claim settled for, uh, $1 million, uh, for the initial, uh, damage. And, uh, the fee for that was 52,000. So we have a net of 948,000 in our account that will be going towards either the cleaning or the, uh, repair.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. D'Vanzo. Um, Mr. Walsh, you're looking at me and I'm, I'm thinking you have the same question I do.
Well, I, I heard fee. Are, is the fee, I just wanna confirm because at the September 20th Board of Finance meeting, um, Mr. Schmidt, our CFO, stated that he had retained or the town had retained, um, a licensed independent adjuster, which is what our board had kind of asked to have done back in, I think it was the June meeting, June 8th, if I'm correct. Um, is that the fee, 52,000?
That is consistent. The settlement was for a million and the adjuster's fee was 52,000. Correct, Mr. Walsh?
It's normally between 5 and 10%. So that, and they want that money when they deliver the check, correct?
They netted that money out of the check, yes. That money's been netted.
They always take their money first. But, um, Mr. Schmidt, how did that process work? I take it that the independent adjuster brought value?
Early on, the, um, Kirma had agreed, uh, to, uh, some of, some of the claims. And so we kinda knew early on that there was going to be a, a certain amount that they were going to accept. Um, how much that was, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, but, uh, I would say, I mean, be hard to argue that he didn't add any, any value to it. Yeah.
They always seem to add value. And that's why, I will tell you, my business, when I'm with clients, I always use them because there's so many ins and outs and wars they've been through and statutes in case, they know all the case law on what case the, the court has ruled in favor of so that they, they can get this extra amount. I just went through it with somebody and it was, it was, it was literally amazing to see how, like, we thought we were getting $50,000 and we got $148,000. I mean, it was just, you know, it's, and you don't have to do any of the work, which is great.
Well, I'll say here, I was just gonna say, he's, he's been very active, um, following the process from, uh, from the point of the, uh, RFP that goes out, um, who bids, what the bids are, um, to the work being done and, and being involved in that and monitoring that as well. So he's been, you know, it, it's been great working with him.
Okay. So that's great, and I'm glad we did it. So thank you very much. So the net amount we received after paying this person, um, is 948,000?
Yes, Jim. And hopefully that was the first bite out of the apple. We're gonna have him come back now that it's cleaned out before the repairs.
Okay. So the 1.75, you have a 948,000, correct, to go towards the 1.75? Is that correct?
That, that would be correct. I mean, we have the money from insurance that will go into the WPCA fund.
Yeah.
That fund, based on all our motions, will pay for the cleaning and the repair. So the, the cash flow is gonna come out of the fund.
Okay. Okay. To me, I, I don't know how anybody else feels, the cleaning needed to be done. It needed to be done probably for 20 years or eight years after the last time it was done. We heard, um, at one of our meetings that it was supposed to be done probably eight years, whatever. Um, and I will tell you, Chairman, Chairwoman Marmee had sent me something showing that it was supposed to be done in 2013 or 14, that at least we had budgeted for it.
Just came up in a budget meeting, uh, that this was an urgent repair that needed to be done in the 2013 budget discussion. So.
So, and I think when I read through that and listened to it, I think it was more reading through it. It seemed to be that, um, I think it was, um, our previous superintendent, I know, the previous, um, it was, it was, um, who was it?
The director. I think it was Joe Michelangelo.
It was Joe Michelangelo's first meeting before the Board of Finance. He, he stated that during the meeting, that it needed to be done, it needed to be done every eight years. So the question, I guess, is that needed to be done anyway, regardless of whether anything blew up or not. So to me, the, you've already spent that money and we authorized you to take it out of your fund, correct? About a month ago?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm trying to question then why on the 1.75, we just don't deduct 948,000? And that the, that we authorize you again then to use the remaining balance out of your fund?
I can add a little bit of clarity to this in that the, um, the, the Kirma came back to us, um, when asked about that money, the million dollars, and they, they said that the, uh, part of it would be used to, uh, as a claim for the cleaning, to cover the cleaning and that the balance would go toward repairs. So I mean, we're, we're kinda looking at it as, as a whole, as a, as a package, but, you know, it's either gonna be the cleaning or the repairs, but, uh, it's, it's a million dollars or 948,000 either way.
I'm sorry, we've already authorized the money for the cleaning. And I think if, if I understood Mr. Walsh's question, which I had the same question, is if the repair is gonna be up to a million 750, and we got a million dollar rough rounded insurance recovery, which is already cash in the bank, why, um, is it something mechanical about that goes into fund balance and this is a fund balance transfer? Why are we being asked to approve the gross amount if we've, uh, if we've already gotten a million dollar insurance recovery? Why isn't this 800,000 instead of, you know, a million 750?
So like I said, the, uh, the Kirma has said that the, that part of it would go toward the, uh, toward the cleaning and then the balance would go toward the repairs. That, and I'm just telling you what, what they said in an email.
But what, what does that have to do with, I mean, we, we set, we approved 625,000 for the cleaning in our September meeting or, or whenever. No, but I don't know.
And the amount was less than that.
Right. And the amount was, so the cleaning is done. I assume it's paid for or on the way to being paid. So this money is being authorized, or we're being asked to authorize this to finance the repair of the digester. So I'm just trying to understand why we need the gross amount versus the net amount. Is that because the, the insurance recovery goes into the WPCA fund and that creates surplus or fund balance, which we now have to transfer?
Exa- so the, the revenue from the claim is gonna go back into the WPCA?
Wait, wait, wait. I think I've heard this before. I mean, when we get an insurance claim, does that have to go to revenue on the town side? So therefore, do we need to appropriate the full expense? I guess that's the question I don't ha- I, I don't know because we might, the insurance might have to go to revenue. And therefore, we might have to appropriate the full expense.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm.
And then, and then they net out.
Yeah. If it goes to revenue and it creates a revenue surplus, then we end up with fund balance in the, or, you know, fund balance in the WPCA. And, and what we're doing here is we're authorizing the appropriation, but we're also authorizing the transfer. So, Mr. Schmidt, is that why we're doing the full amount?
Right. And so because, because it was, uh, approved out of fund balance, that that revenue would go to fund balance and would essentially be replacement for that funding.
Gotcha. Okay. So the million 750 is what we need to do mechanically to, to authorize it, but the net amount that, um, fund balance will be impacted by for the repair is roughly $800,000 after insurance, plus the half a million or so that was paid for the cleaning, right?
Right. And hopefully more.
And that's pending any additional insurance recovery. Got it. All right. Um, Ms. Leclerc?
So I was just gonna say, then do we approve two pieces tonight similar to what we do in the budget? That we approve the revi- increase the revenue by the insurance amount and then approve the expense? So that way they net out and it doesn't just drop down to fund balance?
I, I guess we're gonna have to get an answer. I, I, I don't know how this nets internally, but I would imagine, I thought all insurance, money that we got in went to revenue, like, went to revenue. So therefore, if, if it's coming to their revenue, it should be of their fund balance. And that's what we're kinda paying it out of.
Yeah, I, I think what Mary's asking though, and I get it. So normally, in order for us to spend a revenue surplus, the, the mechanism to do that is we actually have to increase the revenue bu- we have to vote to increase the revenue budget. And then we have. the revenue, but we have to vote to increase the revenue budget, and then we have to authorize the expense. That's what we do in the general fund, right? We did that for the twelve million dollars or whatever. So, I guess it gets to, and the RTM would have to do the same, by the way. I don't know about the Board of Selectmen, but, you know, if this was, if this was just a transfer from, yeah, I think that's right. Jared, do you have a?
Doesn't it happen at the end of the year, though? Like, isn't that the stuff that Caitlin brings us at the end of the year?
Maybe, I don't know the answer. I'm just, I just wanted to rephrase Mary's question, because it does, I mean, I guess put it this way, we have existing fund balance that we can transfer. We're not dependent on, you know, the WPCA already has fund balance in excess of this one million seven fifty. So, Mary, to your point, you know, I don't think we have to do that tonight. We can just transfer existing fund balance, so.
Two of that question is, does the insurance go to the WPCA or to the town's general fund?
WPCA.
Yeah, it sounds like, okay. Thank you, Ms. Leclerc. Mr. Matola?
Just for the public certification, the bottom line is, we're not, we're not funding one point, we're not funding one point seven five million dollars. We're not, you're not going out and bonding for that entire amount, right?
Yes, we're not bonding at all, John.
Right, well, that's right, that's right. It's coming from the WPCA, so.
I guess we're approving the appropriation, but, yeah, part of that is, is, it's not gonna result in a one point seven million dollar reduction to fund balance, because fund balance is gonna be increased by the insurance recovery. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Testani's eager to vote. Any other questions on this item? Ms. Leclerc?
Okay, one other question is, if this is coming out as a repair to the, from the fund balance, should part of that be coming from the town because not everyone pays into the WPCA? In the past, isn't there some type of a split?
My thought, from the years that I've served here, is that on repairs, they're paid by user fees, there's been times where we've done the major repairs, I think is what you're referencing, where like, the town has taken out a bond, specifically the last time that the facility was, had a major upgrade in the early nineties, I believe it was, and the town paid that, or part of it, maybe half of it, fifty percent of it. So, but I think in repairs, we've never gotten involved, they've always been paid from, by their, their fund that they've, that they've built up.
Are you in agreement?
Mr. Walsh is correct. Typically, the major, whatever can be paid out of the operating budget, minor repairs, scheduled repairs, et cetera, comes out of the operating budget, and then the WPCA fund pays for major repairs. If we have to come for bonding, and eventually we'll have this discussion, we will come back to the town when we have a fund balance.
Because I thought there was, I can't remember the whole discussion, but some is paid by user fees and other part is by tax.
You are remembering correctly, in the past, there were certain things.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Leclerc. Mr. Testani?
I actually have a question before I vote, yes.
Okay.
Since Mr. Hurley is here, and I don't think he ever goes home, based on all the meetings he attends, I'm sure you, maybe you thought of this, but out of my own curiosity sake, since we talked about any kind of extra funds available, would that be something that could be applied in this situation? Or is it unique because it's a repair? Is there any grant money that is accessible? I'm just curious.
Yeah, for this one, I think it's a little too immediate, but for future, certainly, we'd be looking at the Clean Water Act funds and some other grant funds that are possible. We have right now a pending grant application on another project as well.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, thank you, Mr. Testani. Okay. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you. I noticed there was a question from Representative Brown about how many bidders, how many bidders are bidding on this work?
Okay, on the, we're talking about on the repair that's coming up. We're going to open those bids on December fifteenth.
So, you have no idea how many even?
That's why I tried to explain, Mr. DeWitt, that we've gotten ahead of the process. We've had to make an estimate on this. We don't have an exact number.
No, I got it, but do you know how many have bid?
I do not know quite yet. On the fifteenth, we're opening the bids. The last time, that two point seven million dollar for the cleaning and repair, there was only one bidder, and that's why it was rejected. We felt it was too high. That's why we split it up.
How many bids for just the cleaning?
I believe there were three.
Great, okay. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Any other questions from board members? Mr. Curley?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a clarifying question. You talked about the initial resolution being up to one point seven five, and the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen approved one point seven five. I think what we're being asked to approve is the one point seven five. Is it more appropriate to be phrased as an up to? That's my question.
I would feel very comfortable if it was up to one point seven five, because I don't think, I'm only one member, the original number at our commission was lower than that, and then some of our commission members felt that going for a higher number so we didn't have to come back, and so we could keep the process moving, was the right way to do it.
So, I guess, this is a question for you, Mr. Schmidt, but if we approve one point seven five and the expenditures actually turn out to be one point six, that doesn't create a problem, right? We can just draw it up to, regardless of whether it includes that phrasing or not?
No, it wouldn't create a, no. And the example was just on this digester, the cleanout. The, your board authorized six twenty-five, and the actual cost was five thirty-one. Didn't cost.
All right, thank you, Mr. Curley.
Does Madam Chair, or does our says up to, or does our say?
No, it just says to appropriate seventeen fifty, but I think the point was that we, typically, we do it this way, we appropriate a certain dollar amount, even when we're bonding, and then the bids come in later. So, if this were a bond, we would go back at some point in time and deauthorize, but I think in this case, we're only gonna end up transferring what we need. Is that right, Mr. Schmidt? Okay. Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, so, I guess my question is, on behalf of your board, is the digester now gonna be cleaned at one interval? Have you established that? Have you discussed it? Like, so we're?
Yes, yes, it's going to be added to the list of our required maintenance, which we maintain. It just wasn't on the list, and it was missed by, as you said, there were two additional superintendents that came in after. Yes, it's on the list, and it's recommended ten years.
Excellent. And one other question, we'd asked early on how many digesters there were. There were some members here, I think it might have been Ms. Marmion, might have asked it, because I went back to watch it, and we never really got an answer. But then, when I see it discussed, it's talking about the primary digester, which to me means there's either some supplemental digesters or some, so.
Yes, I meant to, there is a secondary digester, and that actually is the digester we believe is causing all the smell. And you can, you do have in your backup our capital plan, and in our capital plan, we also have, which is not part to be bonded, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the cleanout of the secondary digester, which will happen as soon as we fix and put this one back online.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr.?
I just want to apologize to Mr. D'Vanzo, because I was told at the last meeting that I mispronounced your name a couple of times, and you and I have been friends for too long for that to happen, so I do apologize for that. Thank you.
Mr. DeWitt?
I don't want to drag this on anymore, we need, but, you know, I'm looking at the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget, where we approved one point four million dollars to do the sludge pump, which I remember that piston pump, God knows why I remember that stupid thing, seven hundred thousand dollars to clean the digester, four twenty to mixing system, whatever like that. You know, I just want to get it on record and Prue, I'd really like this on the record. Whose responsibility is it to make sure that in X number of years, eight years from now, that we do this again? I mean, I want a title or a name, please, and I want it on the record.
Okay, let me, I went back, as you did probably, to two thousand fourteen and found in the minutes of the commission, the WPCA commission, that a decision was made to move that mon, not to pay that money out of the operating budget and to pay it out of the fund. At that point, they also were replacing the plant manager. So, somewhere along the line, that got confused. The two digesters are now on the official maintenance list. We have a list of all the equipment. I've asked them, again, our commission has asked them to go back and make sure that all the equipment is now on this list. So, it's the plant superintendent who would be primarily responsible to make sure that that maintenance gets included in the budget, will gets put on our agenda so we can approve the money from the WPCA and through the commissions.
Great, plant manager. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Other questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Prue, do we have anyone in the chat with questions from the public? No, anyone? We have a hand in the back of the room. If you have a comment, please come on up.
Christine Brown, RTM representative from District Nine. The plant is in my district. Mr. D'Vanzo said residents have been complaining. I just wanted to put their complaints into some context. The consensus is, the smell is really bad. It is disgusting. If you don't live there, I don't think you can really appreciate it, but they're smelling raw sewage. That's what the smell is. It stretches as far as Sherman School, so you know where the plant's located. It stretches all the way to Sherman School, as far east as Colonial Drive. People have smelled it up at Centro. Kids, people can't use their backyards often on days when the smell is really bad, when the wind is blowing a certain way. Kids can't play outside, and there have been reports of children at Sherman getting headaches from the smell. So, this has been going on since April, eight months of smelling sewage. I don't think they're really complaining. I think they have a very valid concern. They have been voicing these concerns to the administration, and I think eight months is a really long time. So, I'm really just here to say this is urgent. I think it should be a priority, and I hope you'll approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, if there are no other comments, we can take this item to a vote. All right, all in favor of appropriating one million seven hundred and fifty thousand from the WPCA fund balance to finance the repair of the primary digester, please say aye.
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 Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, all right, so we're gonna move on to item eight, which is to hear an update on capital projects. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Matola. The materials for this item begin on page thirty-one for the bonded projects and on page thirty-five for the ARPA projects. So, Mr. Schmidt, you're gonna take us through this?
You all have the, have the documents before you for the capital and for ARPA. I'm willing to take questions. There are about, I think I told them, somewhere around seventy different projects, so I don't know if there are any, any questions or concerns. There's a, what we did, and we put into place two applications, online applications for the department heads to fill out, and can kind of do this at a, as needed, that they could go in and with regard to the expenditure and encumbrances, update those amounts, and also put in the, whatever the status of the project is, and hopefully some next steps if, where appropriate. So, you know, that's sort of the format of this, and, you know, you can see whatever's remaining to be spent there. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions on any particular projects. If so, they're probably, they may be better directed to the, to the appropriate department head, but this was, you know, a new report that's been requested, and, and here you go. I think it's a, I think it's a good report, and if I'm open to any, if there are suggestions for something to add to it, I'm open to it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Okay, so for the board, why don't we start with the first report, which is not the ARPA, but the regular projects that are bonded? So, we have, on this report, we're starting out with fiscal twenty-two non-recurring, under a million, and then we have fiscal twenty-two projects over a million, fiscal twenty-three, which are the ones recently approved, under a million, and same for over a million. I do want to ask about projects that are, that were approved prior to this list, which are still active, but before we get into that, do board members have any questions on this set of projects? Mr. Matola?
Just, I just made some notes. So, on, excuse me, on the twenty-two capital over one million, Jared, do you see where the first item is with respect to the trucks? It says, expect delivery of two large trucks next week. Do you recall, and I just didn't have time to look it up, how many trucks did we order? Are we getting with that?
I don't remember what was in the plan. I'd have to go back to the plan and look at it. My recollection is somewhere in the like, ten to fifteen range.
Okay. And then, maybe you can get an answer to this question, on the Duck Farm Road Bridge?
And this, you know, just to go back to that for a sec. If you remember, this was a three-year approval for three years' worth of the plan, so we're in the, in the third year of that now.
And the remaining balance of one hundred and nine thousand dollars, that, we're gonna use that to purchase some more trucks. We just, that could be two or three trucks, just don't know the amount right now. We know the amount, but you just don't have the information in front of you right now.
That's right, and one of the, you know, one of the, I don't know how long that encumbrance is gonna stay on there, but they, there have been supply chain issues with ordering, ordering the vehicles.
Mr. Matola, can I just follow up on that one?
Absolutely.
Mr. Schmidt, I believe we're in the second year, not the third year of that? So, maybe as a follow-up item on that one, I'm assuming that that's good news and that we were able to procure all those vehicles, but I just want to make sure that we are, you know, if that was a three-year authorization, that it, you know, doesn't become a two-year authorization and we get a new one this year.
I'll confirm with DBW where they are.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Matola, go ahead.
That's all right. And then, I don't think you'll know the answer to this one, but I'm gonna ask you anyway, and maybe for the next report, you can clarify, or maybe it'll be self-evident. The Duck Farm Road Bridge, I just, it says, construction began April twenty twenty-two. Utility delays may cause increase in inspection fees as project is taking longer than anticipated. Now in the upper range of schedule. State should approve extension and cover eighty percent of the inspection fees. I guess my question is, is there a chance that the state would not approve the extension? And if that happened, what would happen? And here comes our engineer to answer the question. Save the day, Bill Hurley. Thank you.
I knew I should have cut out. Anyway, we have, we have, are in constant contact with the State Department of Transportation. I've made that clear, that we would be requesting additional grant money for that. It's not a hundred percent, but it would be eighty percent as part of the federal local bridge program. The delays were mainly caused by utilities, and so therefore, the state has at least given us a verbal that it seems reasonable and there should be no problem.
Okay, that's all I have for this, for the twenty-two capital over one million. I may have some other questions, but I'll.
Mr. Hurley, don't go away. Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, it seems to be, the project seems to be delayed and people are starting to complain about it.
about it over in that area. I know you can't really control that. When you say instruct, utility delays, are you talking about moving utilities that like go under the bridge and things like that? What are you talking about, utilities?
Well, it first started off where the town tried to anticipate past utility delays. The poles have to be moved in order to put the large crane in, and so therefore we gave the utilities two-year, one-year, and one-month notice. We even cut down some trees ahead of schedule so that they can put the poles in. The poles were put in pretty good, but unfortunately, one of the utilities was in particular delayed up till June. Then we had the gas company doing work even before the project started, but they didn't finish until July. And then Aquarian Water Company had some issues that they didn't count on, and the contractor really wasn't able to start on the main demolition of the bridge until Sept- well, well into September.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Does, I have a question while Mr. Hurley's at the table. Do you have a question on a different project? Oh, for me, okay, go ahead, Ms. Leclerc.
So when is it anticipated that it will be complete?
It would be in the fall of 2023. The town has an option where we could have the contractor work perhaps during the winter if we feel it's cost-effective or, and, and we've definitely expressed concern with the contractor that we would really like to see this bridge done before school opens. They gave us, again, a verbal, but legally they have the right to go into the mid-fall. So, well, we have buy, we have meetings every two weeks with the contractor and the state to make sure that they're moving along.
Thank you, Ms. Leclerc.
Madam Chair, I just have a quick question on under million, just, just quickly. So, I don't know, this may be more for Anthony Calabrese, but with regard to the Lake Mohegan
splash pad replacement, number one, it's showing, so I'm just curious, maybe, Bill, you do know, was it completed as of December 1? Was that, is that now finished? It is, okay. Because I, I'm just curious, do you know what the delay was? I, I reached out to Anthony Calabrese several times during the summer. I think one conversation was that there may have been some kind of delays with the, I don't know, with supply chain or whatever, but I had quite a few people, residents, complain about that in particular. So I just wondered if you knew of any other situation that happened there and why it took so, basically the entire year, really? I mean, the whole summer was gone, right, because of it?
Yeah, it'd be unfair, but I, I do know that certain supply materials, and I know for a while there are pipe supplies in particular were in short supply, and there was a high demand for them. That probably could have been the reason, you know, supply chain issue, but I, I honestly don't know the, the full reason. You'd have to talk to Anthony here.
And that, that goes back to, if you look at Lake Mohegan, it's different. It's not the splash pad specifically, but it's restoration from Storm Ida damage. For some reason, it was in my head that that, I didn't see it, I didn't look that closely on the ARPA piece, but I thought there were some other allocated monies for that that wasn't going to be part of this. Am I, am I wrong with that? With the, with the storm damage from Storm Ida?
No, just, just
Did we go to FEMA for that or something? I don't remember.
Yeah, so, right, so there would be, we have anticipated that there would be a grant related to that from FEMA. Yep.
In a matter of fact, this week
We don't know the full dollar amount.
I've, I've gotten emails from FEMA. It's still, they're still reviewing the, the process and the, our submitals.
Very good, thank you, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Testane. Mr. Hurley, I'm going to switch back over to the fiscal '22 capital over a million, and, and I've had this question along the way on a couple of these, but we have Commerce Drive Bridge Construction. It says, "Design is 95% complete, but there are no monies expended." Is that design being done internally, or how do we have zero cost associated with that if the design's almost done?
That is under the lotsit program where the town has to pay for the design. So that's all, that's why it doesn't show that. The construction is where the grant money comes from.
Okay, so this is just the construction project itself, and it doesn't, the design was, design costs were appropriated separately, is what you're saying? Gotcha.
Yeah, that was done earlier. And just, might as well give you an update on that one. We have gotten the appraisals and the title search, so now we just have to close on the easements. We finalized the permit, and then we hope to go out to bid sometime in spring 2023.
Thank you very much. Other questions on this, on the non-ARPA projects? Okay, I guess what I'd like to request, Mr. Schmidt, first of all, thank you for the report. This is a much better format than the Munis report we had last time. Appreciate you providing it in this format with the status notes in here. I think that's helpful. I do want to request, though, that we expand this report to include all of the open capital projects. I, I could be wrong, but I believe there were, that there are open projects that are, that were approved prior to fiscal '22, and so if there are open and active projects, if you can please add those to the list next time so that we can understand the status of those as well.
So that's an ongoing project, I think, as we, we've talked about before and was noted in the annual, annual report last year, that it's an ongoing project with, you know, with my department and with Bond Council to reconcile and, and figure out what, you know, what the, the overall amount is and how to deal with any, any kind of overages or underages and reallocating dollar amounts.
Yeah, and I, and I understand that some of those older, older projects may be completed and just not closed out, but I, I didn't know if they were all completed or if some were still active. So, you know, we are, you know, we're only seeing this on a quarterly basis, so, you know, next quarter, if you can provide an, an update on that, that'd be helpful. Okay, if there aren't any other questions, we can move on to the ARPA schedule. Any questions from board members on the status of ARPA projects? Mr. Matola?
Jared, on the, the electric, electric hybrid vehicles, it says no status. It looks like, though, we've spent some money on that, just, what, my, my, my note says what? Question mark. So what does that no status mean, if, if you know?
So we, we actually just started the work on the, on the, on the facility, on the chargers themselves. We've ju- just begun that work.
On the charging stations?
Like this, this past week, I believe, or this week, on the charging stations, right?
Okay, and so that, are we getting, we're going to do the charging stations first before we actually purchase vehicles, right? That's the game plan?
Right. As we noted in the past, there's been some difficulty getting, getting vehicles and finding vehicles that are available for purchase. So we're doing, well, doing what we can now in getting to work on the stations themselves.
Okay. And then, on the same page, different topic, the high-intensity wave in erosion damage and resiliency study. Can you just remind me, is, is that the area between, was it between Penfield down Fairfield Beach Road, or what's the area there again?
Yeah, that, it's the area west of Penfield. Sometimes it's referred to the Fairfield Beach Road Peninsula.
Okay.
That's, that was one of the projects that the Fairfield Flood Erosion and Resiliency Board had, had looked at, and that's, that's, that's still on the ARPA list.
All right, so from, from like Reef Road down, or is it between Reef Road and the Pavilion area? Sea Grape, yeah.
Yeah, it, it could, it's from the Sea Grape, basically west to the peninsula part. If they look at three different sets, the engineer could possibly look at an area between Reef Road and say Penfield if it's necessary, but we haven't gotten that far in that stage yet.
All right, all right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Hurley?
Yeah, just to follow up on the electric vehicle chargers, it looks like you mentioned that the work's getting started. It looks like most of, if virtually all of the money has been expended, so I guess that's a good sign. Do you know the locations of those charging stations? Are they at Town Hall, where, or the police department? Where are they?
You can, if you can picture the Town Hall and on this, the south end where there, there's that island, and then you have parking spots around it that the stations would go in there. Right, I didn't, yes, yeah, Sullivan Independence Hall.
So you're going to remove that beautiful shrubbery there?
There's shrub, there's shrubbery there?
Just a couple of other small items, or follow-ups at least. On the first page, the senior center renovation, it looks like nothing has been expended there or encumbered. It says that the design work is in final stages and ready for bid, bidding, but that's as of August, so it looks like the information's stale. I just was hoping we could find out if that's underway and a more accurate update.
Are you talking about the deck patio or a different one? Because sometimes there's a couple of components.
Yeah, directly above the deck patio, there's a line for senior center renovation, $850,000. Bathrooms, but it's talking about bids in August.
Yeah, I, I might have gotten an email on this earlier, last minute, and if you give me a minute, I think I could, I can probably give you some more information on that.
Okay, thank you. In the meantime, Ms. Marmian, you had a question?
Thank you. So I'm on the traffic lights where we have $1 million for, it says, "An RFP for consultant services received no responses. Rebid, RFP went out last week." So my question is, just, it's, it's more of a general. I understand you went out for rebid, you want to get these bids. What if we don't get bids or for a number of these projects? What if we have $1 million hanging out there and we're not able to meet the timeline given to us for this funding? What is the town's process for reallocating this money or coming back to the boards to understand what these, this, these monies will be allocated towards?
I missed the first part of that. Was, was this a specific project that you were talking about?
Well, I'm looking at, we have $1 million for traffic lights, and RFP went out, we had no bids, we're going out for bids. What happens if, again, we don't get bids and we're at risk for not getting bids, not just on this project, but let's say for other projects? And we have a timeline in which we have to spend this money? What is the town's process for coming back to us and, you know, shovel in the ground, getting this done within the time period?
So we, I'll, I'll talk generally about that, that process, and Bill, Bill can follow up with any specific questions about the lights. So we've got two years at this point, almost exactly. And so, you know, as, as time goes on, and I would say in probably within six months or so, that we'll continue to monitor these and, and talk to the different departments about each of the projects, and if it, get a sense from them whether or not it's realistic that we're going to be able to spend the money, and if not, then we'll have to go back to the boards and, and reallocate the, the funding to, to something else. You know, we, we would develop a, a secondary list of projects that, that this could be, that the funding could be used for.
So with, in, in approximately six months, you'll give us another update, potentially say, listen, supply chain being what it is, or whatever's going on. This is our list of projects that we can get done more quickly, and you'll come to us for approval of those projects?
Yeah, and if we determine, and if, you know, in talking to the departments, if they determine that, look, there's no way that this is going to happen, then yeah, then we would look to reallocate that, that money. And the, the deadline that I mentioned, two years from now, is the, the deadline to commit the funding. We actually have two years beyond that to actually spend the money.
All right, thank you very much.
Oh, and just to real wrap up on the traffic lights, we did re, rebid it, and we had six consultants. We've narrowed it down to three, and they will perform in, we'll select one, obviously. We have the three meetings actually this week, Thursday and Friday, and then we'll select one consultant and give them the notice to proceed probably before the end of the month.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marmian. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you. At the top of page two, under sidewalks, South Port and Stratfield, with a budget of 1.4 million, it says, "A contract has been awarded to one, for 1.74 million." How do we award a contract for more than the budget? I know you say you're coming back to the town board, but what if we say no? Because I know I'd be out, I would probably vote against this one. We didn't vote that number up.
Yeah, no, I think you did. Yeah, a couple of months ago, that, that was one, yeah.
That, I think that might have been the meeting where you were traveling on business? You might have missed that vote.
Oh, you snuck it in when I wasn't here.
We, we did, we did.
All right, got it, thanks.
I can provide Mr. Matola with a, a little more information about the senior center. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Hurley. Well, everybody's got, everybody's here, so you're all good. With regard to the 850,000, I'm told that six, six of the bathrooms are out to bid right now. And with regard to the patio project, it's about halfway done. Patio is done, and they're working on the plans for the grounds and landscaping.
That's helpful, thank you. And may I follow up, I had a couple more.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So just to go back to Mr. DeWitt's point, love, love the new report, but since we did vote to change that sidewalk project, does it make sense to change the budget number so it's in sync with the bid numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll update that number.
Okay, and then the last question on my list is near the bottom. Very curious about the status of the hybrid meeting technology.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The second to last item on the list, the hybrid meeting technology.
Right, yeah, I was just going to, as he's whispering, I was going to say that the board of selectmen approved the contract for the, for the contractor to do that work yesterday.
Hallelujah. Mr. Welsh?
So clearly we have 1.7 million dollars approximately that's unassigned ever since we, I guess, killed the, the fiber optic.
I wouldn't say we killed it.
And some, and, well, it's off the list, and there's no report on it on the list, correct? It's off the list. I know we're going to get something at our working group on it, but, and then, as Ms. Marmian said, there could be some things that, you know, we can't get done on time. And I would suggest, after hearing some of the sewer projects that come up, and since sewer was never on this list, that we start looking to prioritize that over the next year and a half or so, because we have a lot of projects coming up. And sewers benefit most of the town, so
And sewers benefit most of the town, so it would seem to make sense that, I think, if we gave Mr. Davanzo the money, he could spend it real fast on some of the projects that he has coming up, and maybe we make it a default pot of money, just to kind of wrap some things up.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Do you want to respond, Mr. Schmidt, or just take note of that?
No, just to say that, you know, I know because of the, the nature of this meeting and the focus of the previous item, that, you know, sewers are on the top of our minds, but there are a lot of needs. It's not, you know, not, not just sewers, and, you know, we, there, there's a lot, as we went over earlier in this year, that there's, you know, we've got 400 million plus in capital projects.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have to have a further sewer discussion, and I think one of the things that I'm coming aware of is, as we continue to expand this town, when developments go on, there's going to have to be a better mechanism to raise revenue or not due to the development, because we all love the revenue that comes in from building permits, but it does nothing to even come close to the cost of Mr. Davanzo's work that he has to do in expanding the system. It's like something that we've all just not even thought about. We should be putting money away. We should almost be taking the revenue from the building permits and putting it into a fund, because there's just no mechanism for it, or the other infrastructure issues, or the cost of police and fire and all these other things that, as we expand, that we're going to have to start thinking about.
I'm, I'm not disputing that sewer is a, a big need, but you're, you know, you're kind of throwing some ideas out here, and I think they're all worthy, worthy of consideration.
Yeah, and increasing some of the fees for some of the expansion costs for the developers, because there's a lot of development going on and we're just not taking, I think, appropriate analysis of what the infrastructure cost will be to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other, I have one comment on the report for the future, but any other questions on the items in this report?
Much better report, I like it.
Yes, so just a request, if we can also put this on the record, Prue. So I, I think this report is very helpful, but I, I think what would be great, to avoid confusion, is, is maybe, and this I think gets to Mr. Curley's point, if we had the original budgeted cost on here, with all the projects that were originally budgeted, that ties out to the authorization that was approved by all of the boards, I think that would be helpful. I think it gets confusing when line items just disappear, so we could have the original budgeted cost, and then maybe a column for transfers or something. So, you know, if we, if we de-authorized the fiber optic project and we added money to, you know, Stratfield, I think that's helpful to track over time. And the reason I say that is I think there's going to be a bunch of those things going on. We have a number of completed projects that have some money left over. I realize no decisions have been made about that yet, but I just think it gives us the opportunity, you know, to see the bottom line on the available funding. And, and I, you know, with that, I think what would also be helpful is to sort of, you know, have a line item at the end that, you know, maybe says unallocated or something in that fashion. So we kind of know, you know, that we have, we have, you know, some money left over from playgrounds, we have the fiber optic thing offset by some other things, and we kind of are tracking on the schedule, you know, what that pot of unallocated funds is. You know, and I, I realize, Mr. Schmidt, we, we've talked about this before, I don't recall whether it was in the working group or in this, with this board, you know, that the town has a process that you're going to follow to evaluate the costs on these issues, that you're aware of the risks, that some of these costs may increase, and we don't want to immediately reallocate funds to new projects. But I think it, it would, would be helpful to have in one place a tracking of, of what is left, given where we are now, because I think the schedule needs to tie out to the 24 or 25 million dollars in total of the ARPA money, so that, that we all know what we're looking at in totality. So if that can be a, an enhancement to the next report, I think that would be helpful to everyone. Okay. Any other questions from the board on this item? All right, well, again, Mr. Schmidt, thank you for, for pulling the information together. I will go through it again next quarter, and I know this is a process, and, you know, thank you again for your efforts. All right, so we are going to move on to, let's see here, item nine. To hear, consider, and act upon the draft minutes of November 1st, 2022, and November 22nd, 2022. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Ms. LeClaire, seconded by Mr. Walsh, thank you. All right. So the draft minutes begin on page 41 of the backup. I don't know about anyone else. I have a comment or two on these, so I'd, I'd like to take the vote on these minutes separately, if that's okay with everyone. So why don't we start with the minutes of November 1st? Any comments on these minutes from board members? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor of approving the draft minutes from November 1st, 2022, please say aye. Aye. Okay, great, it is unanimous. All right, November 22nd. Comments from the board on these minutes? Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under item three, I guess it's, it looks like it's page 42 of our backup, we were talking about the East Trunk Wet Lines, Wetlands, excuse me, Crossing Project, and there's a line here that says, "James Walsh made a motion to postpone this item to a special scheduled meeting in January just to discuss WC, WPCA projects." I'd like to make a motion to add to that pending capital planning documents, because now, Mr. Walsh would have to agree because it's his comment, his motion, but I think it was, at least on my part, strongly inferred that, you know, I postponed, the reason I postponed is because I didn't feel we had enough of the, the capital planning documents.
You mean the waterfall?
Sure, sorry, the waterfall, yeah, 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 right. So I'd like to make a motion to add to that, to add to that sentence, after WC, after WCPCA projects, pending, the words pending capital plan, or sorry, waterfall, I guess, right, pending waterfall documents.
Seconded by Mr. Matola. Comments on that motion? Mr. Walsh, is that consistent with?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't think we had enough documentation, so I have no problem with it being added.
Okay. Other comments on this? All right, vote on this motion, all in favor of the amendment put forth by Mr. DeWitt, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. All right, I also have one quick item. So on item eight, it says, "To hear an update of the Internal Service Fund as of June 30th, 2022," and then that's followed by the verbiage, "J-Rib Chair Carolyn Tribuco is not available." So I think we're missing something there. So under item eight, I'd like to make a motion to insert the following words. Town Controller Caitlin Bossy presented this item. The fund balance in the Internal Service Fund is approximately $6 million as of June 30th, 2022, which is consistent with the estimate discussed with the Board of Finance during the budget hearings. And then just leave a space before that paragraph for, about Carolyn Tribuco. I think that was actually a question asked by Mr. Walsh, but not related to item eight. Can I have a second? All right, seconded by Mr. DeWitt, any comments on that? Mr. Curley?
Yeah, just, just a clarification. So are you saying that the, the final sentence of eight, this item will be on the agenda for the next meeting, and January is not needed?
Yeah, I think the whole, the, the sentences there, beginning with J-Rib Chair Carolyn Tribuco, those don't really relate to item eight on the agenda. That was just a, that was in, that discussion was in response to a question by Mr. Walsh, so I think it sort of gets inserted between number eight and nine, but it's not part of number eight, if that makes sense. Yeah, it's a separate paragraph. Okay. Any other questions on that? All right, did I get a second on that? I don't remember. Oh, Mr. DeWitt, thank you. All right, all in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous, thank you. Any other comments on the meeting, the minutes from November 22nd?
Madam Chair, I don't want to change anything. I'm just going to state for the record that I'm going to vote against these minutes, since I voted against them, the initial, the statement is correct, that was written in these minutes, but since my initial vote was against, I'm going to stay consistent, so I want to add.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Testani. All right. All right, so all in favor of the minutes from November 22nd as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Stark, Ms. LeClaire, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Marmian, Mr. Matola, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Curley, Mr. Walsh posed, Mr. Testani, thank you. The minutes are approved, eight, one. All right. So with that, we can move to item 10, which is to hear, consider, and act on any communications. Let's first go to Mr. Schmidt. Do you have anything for us?
Just to let the board know that we have asked for and received an extension on our annual financial report, so the extension is to January 31st.
All right. Yeah, it was, if you, if you want to, it was, if we want to discuss that item, but let me just, before we do that, so Mr. Schmidt, thank you for, for raising that. And I, just, just to let the board know, we had our year-end update meeting in October, and we voted to allocate our surplus at that time. That was based on sort of the preliminary numbers as of that date. So when this audit is completed, there may be a difference in the surplus. Hopefully it's a little more and not less, but if that is the case, what would happen then is that surplus would fall to fund balance absent an action from this board. So I would just ask Mr. Walsh, or Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt, to let us, to let the board know if any differential from that 12 million dollar number in October is significant and, you know, and if the town, you know, wants to designate that or not, but, but just to let us know before those financials are finalized.
We will do that, and we're not anticipating any, any changes from what was reported in the quarterly. If there's anything, it, it will probably be negligible.
Okay, thank you. Just, I also quickly, and, and I think this may be responsive to the comment Mr. DeWitt made earlier, so we did agree on the January 31st meeting to review the WPCA plan. We do have the, the waterfall, you know, on that, you know, attached to that date in the schedule at the moment, so the, the idea would be to do both of those things on that evening. You know, the waterfall along with discussion of the WPCA plan. I did have a conversation with Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Kupchak earlier today. I think there was some confusion about that waterfall meeting. I, I can only tell you, it was my understanding, and I thought our board discussed that once the working group was done, that we would have the normal waterfall meeting and discussion, as we always do every year, so that the whole board would get the benefit of, of hearing what was discussed and, and looking at the plan. That was, seemed to be inconsistent with what the first select woman was thinking. She thought that the working group process would, would eliminate the waterfall meeting, so we talked about it. I'm just letting the board know. You know, I, I think we did agree that we will have a presentation. We're not sure how that's, not sure, maybe, you know, Mr. Schmidt may want to comment exactly what that's going to entail, but I, I think I heard from everybody here that it was important that we all heard that waterfall when it was completed. So I just, if there's any questions on that, I want to make sure that we're all aligned, given that there appeared to be some confusion among this board and, and the administration, so.
And can, can I just clarify something before the questions? Just, just to, you know, the, I think the difference wasn't whether or not a meeting was going to happen, or whether or not the, that meeting would occur, it was what's going to happen during that meeting. And, you know, I, my understanding, in talking to the chairwoman, was that there was an expectation that all the department heads would be there and presenting all of their items, and we would go into a lot of detail. And that wasn't, that wasn't our intention or our understanding of how that meeting was going to go, and that there would be, there would be some kind of presentation, but it may not involve all the department heads. So that's, I'm just, I'm just letting you know what, what our understanding and our intention was. And with the idea being that, at some point, when all these projects go before you, you're going to have to, you're going to be asked to vote on these for, for the projects that happened in FY '24. And so at that point, that would be the, in my mind, the appropriate time to ask very detailed questions about each of the projects, and that the, the meeting on the 31st would be more of a, a high-level overview of the plan and, and of the projects generally. And again, the, so for the, the projects that were, would happen in FY '24, there would be opportunity to hear details about them, and then the projects that happened beyond that point, 25 to 28, you know, there was our, they're on, they're, they would be on the, on the waterfall, as they normally are, and, you know, would, would help, I think, to give context to the, to the plan overall, but that there, you know, because there's, there would be no votes happening at the time, there would, there's not a lot of reason to go into great detail on each of the individual projects for the out-year projects.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I, I just think it's really important to hear from the board. I do just want to clarify one thing. It was never our practice or our expectation to go through each project in detail, that the waterfall meeting has always been a high-level overview of the projects with the understanding that, that they'll be discussed in detail when they come before us. So I, I think the big difference, or the big gap in expectations at the moment is that, is around the department heads appearing before us. So I, I just do want to hear from the board, because I think, you know, the administration needs to know what we're asking for. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My expectation is that we conduct the waterfall meetings the way we've always conducted them, which is a long-term look at projects. You know, and I can't remember what project or budget we were talking about last meeting, but there was a comment made that we were, that the, the amount had been cut because we were coming up against our bonding limit. And in this, in this environment, where we're bonding so many things, that 25, 26, 27, 28 lookout, and, and keeping in mind what our bonding limit is, I think is a very important discussion. So I'm not looking for an overview, a, a top five list, I'm looking for a long-term. And, and again, I don't need to hear Mr. Hurley come out and tell me what, what Bridgie's going to redo in 2027. Just need to see on the list what, what that, you know, project name is and what's the estimated cost of that budget.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Other comments? All right, Mr. Testani?
Yeah, I do, I just, I understand what was saying, just, I know we, I believe Mr. Walsh, and I believe there's, I want to say two members from the RTM, I believe, as well, right? So I think to get that process over, and I think we talked about early, at the end of November 26th, I think we said, right, for capital meaning, perhaps that's, if, otherwise, we're talking about a waterfall and the WPA. Otherwise, we're talking about a waterfall and the WPCA on the 31st, and then again on September 26th. So to me, that's almost contradictory. Can I?
Mr. Curley, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. I actually see those as two separate things, intentionally six to nine months apart. The idea being, if we're... If we, as a board, are asked to approve a capital project of significant size, and we don't know how that fits into the grand scheme of things, we have a tough time understanding or making a decision as to whether we approve this. If we do, we could potentially displace something else. So for me, the capital plan, the schedule that comes out of the workshop, while it's not individually detailed, reviewed for all the projects, it's not approved at that point, it's at least... It at least gives this board the map to understand how these projects fit into the longer-term three, four, five-year plan or longer, right? So my feeling is that the rhythm that this board had prior to the capital plan workshop process change was to have meetings, a review of the capital plan in September, and that this board could refer to that plan throughout the year.
Right.
As these projects came forward. Last year and this year, as this capital plan schedule moved, not from September, or not occurring in September, but in... Excuse me, January, we're flying blind for a number of months. So my feeling is, let's get the capital plan update when it's available in January. That gives us a snapshot in time. And then what I hoped or asked as we added that September meeting to the schedule would be, eight months later, we're going to get a refresh of that, and it's going to be a different schedule. But it's an opportunity to give us something to look at through the fall as projects come forward.
I understand. I don't... Number one, I don't think we're flying blind. We've got two members of our board that have a capital planning workshop. So they have a workshop, right? Why are we... So in other words, Chair and Mr. Walsh, by participating in this, in essence, we're having... And I understand all the rationale behind the meetings. Why have the capital planning workshop?
Well, and I'll just...
And we're... Just let me finish my point. We wouldn't be flying blind. We would just need an update from our Chair and Mr. Walsh on what transpired during these meetings. And I'm sure if there was something that had resulted from that meeting, those meetings that they had, that the board needed to be immediately aware of, or more aware of, or whatever the right verbiage might be, that would help us to be educated in terms of something that was unusual in a capital planning future, it would... They would have shared, I'm sure.
Well, I...
So flying blind, I don't think is the right term.
I do think it's flying blind, because only two of the...
I don't, so we'll disagree.
Okay, fair enough. But my perspective is that we have two members of this board represented in that, but we don't have all nine, and nor should we, right? Before this capital plan workshop committee was formed, the administrations in the past would go through this exercise of compiling and prioritizing projects, and they would bring them to this board. All I see that... My perspective is that the administration is pulling in expertise from the Board of Finance, the RTM, other vested members of other boards to participate in that prioritization project, and that's fine, if that's the way the administration wants to run that process. However, it doesn't relieve the administration from the obligation to inform this full board of what the plan is. And that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you. You want to respond to Mr. Testane as well? Okay. Is that all right? Or just... Go ahead, Mr. DeWitt.
The... I see the September meeting that we added today as a resetting of a time that I thought was... Worked very well for many, many years. I'm looking at Ms. Leclerc, because she was integral to putting it in September, right? Resetting a time back to a time in the whole budget process year that is relevant and, I think, timely, right? I also agree, you know, well, listen, I went on record last meeting, and even went so far as to amend the meeting minutes tonight, to say that I don't feel like I have enough information to vote on what Mr. Hurley had brought before us, and I still feel that way. So I am in agreement that we have two very capable members that are on this committee, and they're providing valuable input. Input. The output still has to come to us, and the output isn't a list of five things. The output is the whole darn thing that shows a five-year and a more projection. That's what I would expect it to be.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Other comments on this? Okay. And Mr. Walsh isn't here. I just... Oh, I'm sorry, Mary. Go ahead. Yeah, I just... I want to be... I want to just give a little perspective on what the working group is doing, because at this point, we don't... We don't ourselves have the five-year plan. We have been attending meetings where the individual departments have been presenting their projects. It's my understanding that the pulling together of all the projects we've heard about, as well as the detail of the projects we haven't heard about, will be something that the working group looks at in January. And I appreciate Mr. Testane's comments. I do think, though, whether, you know, I agree with what's on that piece of paper or I don't, whether Jim does or he doesn't, I do think it should come before the whole board, because I don't... You know, it's not something we're voting on. It's not something where, you know, that, you know, we're empowered to speak on behalf of the board. I think everybody needs to see it, so that as the projects do come before this board, everyone's comfortable, as Mr. Curley said, that they're voting on something that fits within the total. So I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page with that. Mr. Walsh, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think we have to have the January presentation, because that's fiscal year '23's, '22, '23's presentation. So we have to have one. The one in September is the next fiscal year '24's. So it's completely different. So I know we have a lot of work to do, because we still have to see the list. And I think maybe our working group should talk about what this presentation will be or what we want, and maybe we should have one more conversation before this board about what we're expecting, but maybe we can bring back some more information to you in January. I don't know how you feel about that, Madam Chairwoman.
Yeah, no, of course. That sounds good. I mean, listen...
But I think... I think the way Lori and... I don't know how you thought about Lori. I thought we were just kind of representative of the group. I didn't, you know, our decisions are really not decisions, because we'd all have to make decisions. Not that there's a vote on the capital plan anytime, but, you know, I think we should get some presentation, something close to what it used to be for January, and maybe have... I don't know whether we need every director or for each department present, but maybe some of the main ones, so we could try to limit that to some degree, so people could ask questions. I'm not even sure there's going to be a lot of questions. I think a lot of the... From what I've seen, I don't know, I'm not going to speak for Lori, but I've not seen a lot of changes in the projects. You're not going to be surprised by seeing some of these projects. It's just basically where they're going to be slotted and things like that. So, you know, I think, you know, I think we'll get something at the end of January that we can all move forward on, but, you know, I... But I think we'll talk to the first select woman in the working group a little bit more.
Okay, that's fair. I just want to make sure that, you know, that when we come back to the board, that you all are getting what you need in order to be able to vote on issues, because what I don't want to happen is... And I fully understand, and we voted unanimously during our last meeting to postpone the WPCA project, but we did that in part because, you know, there was a level of discomfort that not only we had not seen the plan, but we didn't know where that fit into the waterfall. That's what I'm trying to avoid. So I just want to make sure that when that process happens, that it meets everyone's needs. Okay? Mr. DeWitt?
My last comment on this, I promise. Over the years, I've always used these waterfalls as a piece of reference material. There's... I'm not exaggerating. There's six years of them in this bag here, right? And often reference them in meetings, when someone comes up that says, "Hey, we're going to do a school project in 2026," it was never on the waterfall, you know? So I think it's an important part of my basic reference material, and anyone for this board needs that. I also want to notice that Ms. Carey has her hand up, and has had her hand up for quite a while here, so I don't know if she's got a... I think she might have a question, so...
Yeah, we are... Yeah, no, I apologize. We are out of the public comment section. Prue was... I'm sorry if we missed Ms. Carey.
Okay.
I'm just telling you, I'm looking at her hand.
Yeah, I mean, if it's okay with everybody, I'm perfectly happy to take comment at the end of the meeting. Objection to that? We have one. Should we vote on it?
I got a phone.
All right. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Prue, do you have to unmute or anything? Okay, so first of all, Ms. Carey, I apologize. The way this room is set up, the screen is behind us, and so unless we happen to turn around, we don't see you. So I apologize for not recognizing you earlier.
I missed the... I was trying, when you were asking if there are any questions, I was trying to type it in at that moment, so I did miss that window. So I appreciate taking my question later. But my question is, was going back to the capital planning, which is, is there a town-wide asset inventory by department of, you know, of all equipment, vehicles, technology, you know, buildings, that, you know, just those, basically everything that's sort of on here, so that there's one inventory that exists of everything that the town owns, all assets? And, you know, that would associate, tie into this capital planning, because it's an existing inventory that happens on an annual updated basis.
Mr. Schmidt, I mean, I know we have the building report, if you will, from Silver Petroselli. All town assets? I'm not aware of anything. Do you want to address this?
No, I mean, we have inventory record of all the assets, whether or not it's centralized or how easily... How easy it would be to put it into one document. I'd have to talk to my staff about that.
Does anybody have a follow-up? All right. Ms. Carey, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it did.
All right, thank you. All right.
I need to address the...
Okay.
7 Green Acres Lane, Fairfield.
All right, thank you, Prue. All right. Any other... Anything else from the board before we...
Last one, I promise.
Mr. Curley.
Sorry, yeah, just, we were in the communications section, and I just noted that on November 23rd, this board received an email that was... We were copied on, I guess, from the Flood and Erosion Control Board to Mr. Bremer. And I just want to make sure that the... Not... There are letters available, but that it's just into the record that that letter was sent.
Okay. So that relates to the Penfield Pavilion Project, and I should have noted, we communicated to this board and, I guess, to the public that we were going to have an update on Penfield in November, which never happened, so the administration has pushed that out. Mr. Schmidt, do you have any information on the revised timing for that update?
I'll tell you what I know. Tom Bremer is actually... I see him, his name up there, but that we are awaiting approval of the plans from the regulatory agencies. So briefly, briefly, that's it. Tom, I don't know if you want to chime in here.
Sure, I can chime in. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We are... We have a presentation that we're ready to bring to all the boards in terms of money and ideas and concepts and all that kind of stuff. We're waiting for the actual final approvals from both EPA as well as FEMA. We have approvals from DEEP, but we're waiting for the final. The first select woman wanted to... I mean, I've been told a lot of very positive things, but until we have it in writing, and the first select woman wanted to wait until we have something concrete and in writing of the approvals. And also, a number of questions were raised in the previous discussions back in August about if we do XYZ, perhaps we will be able to request the funding levels back of $4 million, et cetera. So we... Those questions have all been posed to the FEMA, the regulatory agency, and I'm waiting for a response, because I basically said I need it in writing. I don't want to rely on what somebody said. I want to be able to pass it around and say, "Here's their position." So once... And I have been, how can I put this, aggressive in trying to get answers to those questions, and I'm very hopeful that we'll have answered those questions soon, because I have a team of people standing by, ready to go, as soon as we get the funding and all that kind of stuff. So we're just waiting for those final determinations by the regulatory agency. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bremer. Ms. Marmian, you had a follow-up question?
I have a follow-up question. So I'm just... I'm just trying to understand, does getting the input or approval from the FEMA, et cetera, does that preclude the boards from making their own kind of determination? What if, for example, we want to explore a different option than what the town has put forward to FEMA, for example? It seems... It's just, are we putting the cart before the horse? Shouldn't we get the input from the town boards first and then go to FEMA? Or just explain that process to me?
Well, I think the process from the administration's viewpoint is, we have an NOV, which is public and is easily accessible by all, and we are responding to the NOV as best we can. We're trying to fix, if you will, the notice of violation. And the administration has embarked on a program. We have looked at a whole host of different options, if you will, on how to respond. And we've picked the best ones from the administration's viewpoint, and we're trying to get FEMA to approve those. I don't think it's putting the cart before the horse, because you have to start somewhere. You have to do... You have to start somewhere, so that's what we've done.
Thank you. So just to go back to the Flood and Erosion Board's concerns, you know, we received an email. Are those being considered in the plan that you're putting forth to FEMA? I'm just confused as to whether or not those concerns were considered.
We have had a number of meetings with the Flood and Erosion Control Board, as a matter of fact. I had a meeting with them for two and a half hours today. So yes, their concerns are being considered, and will be part of the presentation when I go in for funding. I'm sorry, the presentation to all the different boards.
Other questions on this? Okay. Well, I just... I'll just make a comment, and thank you, Mr. Bremer, for everything you're doing. I personally think that Penfield is... It's a sizable expenditure that deserves public input, and I don't think it's a good idea or appropriate for this board to be in the position of hearing a presentation and being asked to vote on it immediately. I think we're going to need an adequate amount of time to make sure the public's informed and that they know that they can provide input, so... So that would just be my two cents. I think this is a, we're in a very different situation than we were years ago when, when the decision to build the pavilion was made, because at that time, there was a sizable grant that was covering a substantial amount of the cost, and that's not the case right now. So I just, I just don't think anyone on this board, well, I can't speak for anyone else, but I know, I personally don't want to be in the position of being asked to vote on this without making sure that we've had an opportunity to hear whether this is something that the community is behind. I do know that the first select woman has been talking about this in her newsletter, and people know something's happening with the pavilion, but I don't think that, you know, there's really been an opportunity to, to get public feedback. I, that's personally something I want to see before I vote on anything, so I'll just say that for the record. Any other comments? Mr. DeWitt?
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that, Madam Chair. Having been, having been a person who voted on this twice already, I really am looking forward to having all the data. So the fact that Mr. Bremer and the administration is waiting for FEMA or DEEP or whoever the heck it is to come out with a final, real, no kidding answer that, that leads to a solution at the end of the day, I'm in favor of. I'm also not in favor of coming here, you know, that night, getting the big briefing and say, hey, are you ready to spend 13 and a half? So, so I'm, I'm going both ways, right? I really do want to hear a no kidding solution from the administration that's backed up with real data from these, from these organizations. But I also agree that I think it might take a little more time and some, you know, some input from the public before we make a final vote. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. All right. Mr. Walsh?
Can I ask Mr. Bremer a question, please, through the chair?
Yes.
Mr. Bremer, so at some point, you're seeking in writing something from a decision by FEMA that says that if we rebuild it to their parameters and that they may, hopefully we will know whether they might give us the funding that they were supposed to have given us years ago?
As I said earlier, I've raised that question with them, and they're, they're, they're going to come back to me with something in writing.
Perfect. And you have no idea on how long that's going to take?
I don't have, as I sit here today, as I said, I'm very aggressively trying to get those answers in writing, and I'm very hopeful that I'll have them soon, but with a gun to my head, no, I have no idea when it's coming in.
Okay. No, I, I respect that answer, but just that, if we're going to make a decision, it'd be great if we didn't miss another whole beach season if we didn't have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Matola?
I'm going to throw this at you, Mr. Bremer. If there's a, if there's a chance you're not going to get an answer from FEMA for several months, is there a thought process of reopening Penfield and using it this summer and then maybe doing the work at a later date? Is that, is that at all, and I don't mean to pin you down, but is that a consideration? And then you seek whatever funding you want to seek from the town bodies, you know, maybe a year from now?
Well, in fairness, we have not considered that because we don't expect it's going to take months.
Okay.
But if I have an indication, I will answer it this way, and obviously I have to consult with the first select woman who will make the ultimate decision, and I will follow her lead, but my sense is that if it seems like I get an indication that we're not going to know any something for a few months, then we're going to have to, we're going to have to rethink the entire process because as Mr. Walsh just alluded to, it's going to take 12 to 15 months to do this from start, and we haven't started yet. So if I'm going to put it off for a few months, yes, we're going to have to really reconsider what we're doing.
Yeah, and that, and just, I appreciate your answer. There's just, my understanding, there's nothing structurally wrong with the building today. It's, it's a safe building. People could use it if it was open. And so I'm just throwing that out there that, and I appreciate your answer, that there may have to be a reassessment later on down the road if you're not getting these answers that we all want in the coming months. Is that like a fair statement?
I think that's a fair, fair statement.
Thank you for that answer. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matola. And back to Mr. Curley's original point, I think, you know, if anyone didn't see the, the email from the Flood and Erosion Control Board, I'm happy to forward it to anyone. You know, it might be good to invite them to the meeting when we're discussing Penfield because I think, at least for myself, some of the technical aspects of, of this and what's been discussed are, are things I'm not personally familiar with, and I, I think that, that would be important. And I also, it would be terrific if we could hear directly from a representative from FEMA or DEEP or whoever else is, is advising us. You know, and let, maybe if it's fully explained in writing, that's not necessary, but, you know, I, my, my sense is that it might be helpful, so just something to consider.
Is this meaning, though, that we're going to have when we finally get to this, is this, is this, are we going to be expanding this into not only the construction, whether we decide to build it or not, but into regards to possibly hundreds of millions of dollars of flood and erosion projects? I mean, are we really going to confuse the two projects? Because that seems to be completely unfair. And it seems to be a way to kind of try to sink the Penfield project. It seems to weigh, a reason to try to actually tank it. To me, there are two different distinct issues. One is whether we're going to build Penfield or not. And then if we're not, what do we do down there? I mean, do we sell it? Do we blow it up and just make it beach, which I know a lot of the residents down there want, because that, those issues, those issues have long been litigated. We litigated those issues for years, a number of years ago. And the thought about people trying to pull that in now and trying to like reinvent this and like trying to have a second bite of the apple seems to be completely not just, to be quite honest with you. So I do not want to confuse long-term flood and erosion. I'm not saying there aren't. I live in the beach area too. So that's a whole different issue. That's a whole different animal, and I do not want to be confusing these two issues. I'm willing to have the issues. I'm willing to bring flood and erosion in under a whole different meeting, but it shouldn't have to do with what Penfield is. That's my.
Yeah, I just, yeah, thank you. No, I, I think you're right. I mean, I, if there's anything remotely like hundreds of millions of dollars of flood erosion control, I don't think that's what we're talking about. I could just tell you from my perspective, and I know this community's been down this road before and litigated it, but we're now at a point where potentially fixing this building costs more than it cost to build it originally. And, and we have potentially, and we have no, we may, may or may not have any funding attached to it. So the last time the community and the boards went down this road, there was a cost to the pavilion, and a big chunk of that cost was getting reimbursed. So that's a different decision than is potentially before us now when we have a larger cost and possibly no reimbursement to, to, to fix the existing building. So I have no preconceived, you know, view on this. I mean, I live near the pavilion. I think it's a beautiful amenity for the community. I love it. I don't, you know, but, but, you know, when we're talking about rebuilding it, I think everyone, all of our boards are going to be obligated to understand what the cost is and how that fits into our other priorities, et cetera. And if it worsens flooding in the area, then, you know, that's, I think that's part of the equation. So I, I, you know, I don't know any of the answers to any of this, Jim. I just think that it needs a, a fair hearing before the boards. And what my concern was that we not, you know, what I don't want to be in a position of doing is having an agenda come out Friday and having a meeting Tuesday where we're expected to vote. That, that was my concern. I, I don't think that would be fair to the board or to the community. So that's all.
As long as we understand that FEMA is going to determine, correct, I'm asking this to Mr. Bremer, I guess, who's in charge of the project. FEMA is going to determine whether there's a pavilion or not, what height the elevation's going to end up being. That's their purview. And whether there's a pavilion or not, it's not going to stop flooding. The building is not there to stop flooding. We tried to do that, and they said we failed in what we did. And now we have an enforcement action, correct, Mr. Bremer?
Yeah, if I may, and I don't mean to get into, you know, a partial disclosure slash argument on this, but as I said earlier, both Brenda and I met with the Flood Erosion Control Board this morning for a number of hours. And one of the things that they requested that we add to what we will be proposing is a, a study, if you will, on some, to try to come up with some resiliency options for some of the homes behind Penfield. Now, having said that, one of the arguments that we've been, I have been having, I'll just put it on myself personally, with the Flood Erosion Control Board is, as Mr. Walsh just pointed out, FEMA's taken a very strong position. You're going to an eight-foot elevation, and, and we need to get rid of the foundation. And Lori, you're absolutely correct. In the past, when we, when we built this building, we had an opportunity to recoup some of the money from FEMA, et cetera. And I'm hopeful that we still will. But even if we don't, one of the big differences that we have between now and then is we have a whole bunch of contaminated fill under the building, which we have got to remove. We don't, there's no choice involved. There's not, we need to argue more with FEMA and DEEP and EPA. These are, we're in a position where I've got to do it, or we've got to do it, or the town has to do it. So although I appreciate that, certainly the difference between now and then, we're kind of under the gun, and I don't really have a lot of room to maneuver, if you will, in, in that instance. So, and, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to argue with anybody. I think everybody is making a good point. But all I can say is what I just said, which is Brenda and I have met with the Flood Erosion Control Board. They've asked us to include in the, in our proposal, some money for a study to, to look at exactly what potential impact there might be to some of the homes directly behind Penfield. We've absolutely agreed to that. It's not a problem, and it's probably something that we should have thought of honestly, but didn't. So we're going to include that in. But that's the extent of it. And I think, and I, I think the other thing that Brenda agreed to with the Flood Erosion Control Board is to allow them to come before the capital planning workshop people to talk about perhaps putting some money aside for some, from larger capital projects. And I would also like to add that in response to, gee, we don't want to have a quick hearing, I'm sorry, a quick meeting, I can appreciate that as well. However, I would say, we did have a meeting in Sept, in, in August. We are going to have a public meeting in front of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the RTM wherein I'm, I'm sure the public will have an opportunity to weigh in and raise whatever questions and make whatever statements they have. So I would just, I would just have you consider that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bremer. And listen, I don't want to jump ahead of, of things. I think, you know, we, everyone appreciates that the contamination has to be dealt with. It's, but we have two pieces to the project that money was set aside for. The contamination and the, the fix of the building or the construction. So again, just looking to make sure that as we go forward, you know, as, you know, as soon as you know what the, what your timing is, I think that would be helpful. And I think all of us have an interest in making sure that we all have the information we need and that we have an opportunity for the public to weigh in, because at least for me, that's important. So thank you for, thank you for the update, and look forward to, to hearing how things go.
Suffices to say, too, unlike the other two times, there's no do-nothing option. We got to do something here.
We, the contamination, yeah. The contamination is a, is, has to be dealt with.
The other two times, we could have said, oh, we won't do anything. We're fine. This time, so there's no, don't do anything option, which is, I think, a big, a big difference.
But as, but as everyone knows, or as everyone may recall, you know, the, the money that we put aside and designated, there are two components. There was $5 million for contamination, $8 million to fix the building. So, you know, those are, those are the two pieces that'll, you know, unless those numbers change, that'll be what's before us. But I appreciate that, Mr. DeWitt. That's absolutely right. All right. So anything, anything else? Or, all right. Well, we can move on to item 11, which is adjourn, to adjourn, so I'll take a motion for that. Mr. Curley, seconded by Mr. Walsh, all in favor? All right. It's unanimous. Good night, everyone.
Everybody have a happy holiday.